So we're going to call the meeting to order. It is 6:22. And please stand for this pledge of allegiance. Could you guide us, Vice Mayor Lance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Roll call, please.
Laurie, could we do roll call, please?
Do we need roll call?
Yes, we need roll call.
Mayor Cruz?
Present.
Vice Mayor Lance?
Here.
Councilmember Bagby?
Present.
Councilmember Pollak?
Here.
Councilmember Walter? Thank you.
Okay, is there any conflict of interest on the agenda, any council members? None? Review, agenda review, and changes or deletions? David, I think we discussed there's going to be some changes.
Madam Mayor, members of council, I'd like to start by recognizing our student liaison, who is here this evening that wasn't reflected on the agenda.
Okay. And so Guadalupe, could you please introduce yourself? Thank you. Any other changes or deletions? I think we have to add a correspondence.
Madam Mayor, there was correspondence received after the agenda was posted. This is in regards to item G1, considering approval of a 12-month commitment to advertise monthly in the Cloverdale Connector, was correspondence received on Friday via email from SoCo News. There's additional correspondence there. There was also additional correspondence received on a consent item regarding the vegetation management program at Porterfield Creek Open Space. There was a letter of support for approving an agreement with Northern Sonoma County Fire District that was received likewise on Friday, the 22nd, after the agenda was posted. No other changes, Madam Mayor?
Thank you. At this moment, we will have public comments. Any person wishing to speak to the city council on any item that is not on the agenda may do so at this time. Members of the public have the right to speak on any items on the council agendas during that item. Pursuant to the Brown Act, council is not allowed to consider issues or take action on any item not listed on the agenda. Any person present who wants to make any comments on anything that is not on the agenda. Are there any hands?
I see none, Mayor.
Thank you.
Oh, I do have one now. One second.
Thank you.
Jade, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Please address the council. Thank you.
Hi, council. My name is Jade Weimeth. I'm the executive director at La Familia Fama, and I recently emailed everyone on the council about some of the mental health services that we're providing. And I wanted to follow up with some of the things that are happening in Cloverdale around mental health, around our community. What we're seeing is that a huge number of folks that need mental health support around fires, around COVID, around underappointment. And that's not just adults, also our kids. And currently, we have a grant, we're providing services, but we found in three weeks that we are at capacity currently in terms of serving our community. And what that means is we're not going to be able to take on more referrals, one-on-one individual therapy sessions, and all referrals will need to be going into group therapy, which is very healing and important, and we want to be able to provide one-on-one direct therapy for as many folks in Cloverdale as we can. And at this moment, we can. So I would love to sit down or have a conversation around about increasing funding for mental health services in Cloverdale. And that is all.
Thank you very much, Jade. Any other hands?
I do not see any more, Mayor.
Thank you. And at this point, we'll close public comments. At this moment, we are going to go ahead and do our proclamations and presentations. David, please.
Good evening, Mayor. So the next two items are in regards to swearing in. Two members of our police department. I'd like to go ahead and turn it over to Chief Ferguson to conduct the swearing-in ceremony and oath of office, starting with our newest dispatch supervisor, Kaitlin Jensen. Chief?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. I'm excited to stand here before you tonight to introduce the two newest members of our management team at Cloverdale Police. One of these has been working as a supervisor for well over a year, and due to COVID, we were unable to do an official oath of office and swear in here in the council chambers. And so we're really happy to be able to do that tonight. The second, of course, should be very familiar. Just a few weeks ago, council unanimously approved a staff report requesting the reorganization of the police department, which included the development of a dispatch supervisor and creation of that position. And that is the other individual who's here tonight to be given the oath of office and sworn in. So I'd like to start. I am going to reverse it, if you don't mind, real quick. If I could have Sal Berusso come up first. As you will hear after I read these bios, both have a tremendous amount of expertise and experience in their fields that make them ideally suitable for supervisory roles within the organization. First here is Sergeant Sal Berusso. In his 27th year as law enforcement professional, he began his career in 1994 when he graduated number one in his class, 103rd Police Academy. He worked for the Sonoma County Sheriff's Department until he retired in September of 2018. He took a job with the Santa Rosa Police Department upon retirement and worked as a police officer there until March 20th, when we stole him from Santa Rosa Police, and he accepted the position as a police sergeant. I've had conversations with Ray, the chief of Santa Rosa, and he has forgiven us. During his career as a law enforcement officer, Sal has worked in the patrol division, as well as a variety of collateral and specialty assignments. He has a combined 10 and 1/2 years at the rank of detective and worked in the homicide and violent crimes investigations unit and the property crimes investigations unit. His collateral and specialty assignments have included agricultural crimes investigator, off-road motorcycle team, marine enforcement unit, underwater dive recovery team, use-of-force instructor, emergency vehicle operations instructor, field training officer, hostage negotiator, peer support counselor, and he also worked on a tactical flight, as a tactical flight officer on Sheriff's Henry I helicopter, for those who don't know. He also instructed his agency and allied agencies on offer involved critical incident procedures and protocols. Sal is the recipient of his basic, intermediate, and advanced professional certificates issued by the State of California Commission on Peace Officer Standards and Training, and has nearly completed the requirements for his supervisory certificate. He has completed over 2,500 hours of post-certified training and over 3,000 hours of non-post training. He has received 47 commendations, including being awarded a medal for his lifesaving efforts during the Tubbs Fire. Aside from law enforcement, Sal is an ASE certified automotive technician and an advanced open-water dive instructor. He also currently works as an instructor and evaluator at the Santa Rosa Junior College for the Law Enforcement Supervisory Course. Sal is engaged to Maria Kinney and has two amazing daughters, Mackenzie and Kayla. In his off-time, Sal enjoys building muscle cars, golfing, boating, and spending as much time as possible with family and friends. So I'm sure it's no surprise to anybody here on the dais that Sal has been also appointed to one of the team members for the cold case homicide investigation. Clearly with his experience, it's been hugely beneficial to this point. But at this time, what I'd like to do is go ahead and do the official oath of office. So Sal, if you'll raise your right hand and repeat after me, please. I, Sal Berusso?
I, Sal Berusso.
Do solemnly affirm
that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States
and the Constitution of the state of California against all enemies, foreign and domestic, that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of California. That I take this obligation freely without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion and that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter. Very well done. Congratulations. If I could have Maria come up for the I'd like to call Kaitlin Jensen up at this time. So hello. It's Kaitlin. I'm sorry.
It's okay.
My bad. I put the eye in a different spot. Kaitlin just began her 19-year of law enforcement service as a police dispatcher with the city of Cloverdale on October 20th, 2021. Born and raised in Cloverdale, Kaitlin graduated from Cloverdale High School in June of 2000. After graduating from Santa Rosa Junior College and attending Sonoma State University as a criminal justice major, Kaitlin was made aware of an ad in the Cloverdale Reville by her mother advertising an entry position as a police dispatcher at Cloverdale PD. Hired October 20th, 2003, I'm going to call her Kat because that's what I call her. So that's just easier for me. Kat has worked her entire law enforcement career at Cloverdale Police Department, where she handled countless felony calls, in-progress critical incidents, vehicle pursuits, foot pursuits, heightened domestic calls, and more barking dog complaints than she would like to admit. Kat has worked countless overtime hours, holidays, and weekends, and she has found humor and pride within a career that has allowed her to form long-lasting relationships and with frequent callers, the trust and dependability of her coworkers, and an empathetic, calm demeanor with her community members. A certified communications training officer since 2005, Kat has participated in the training of every hired dispatcher for the last 16 years. And that's just about all of them, do you agree? In 2007, she was a recipient of employee of the year, and Kat currently holds basic, intermediate, and advanced dispatcher certificates. With the recent promotion to dispatch supervisor, Kat looks forward to immersing herself in the newly appointed position to help lead and support her dispatch team and facilitate growth and progress within the unit. Kat is the proud mom of two sons who are here tonight, ages 12 and 10, and in her spare time, she enjoys cooking and being a sous chef to her better half Victor. Spending time with her family and friends in Cloverdale and Boonville, Kat enjoys trail riding and regularly rides mules at Lake Sonoma with her father. An avid plant and flower addict, Kat can normally be found outside doing yard work, gardening, and planting her latest nursery find. As Cloverdale Police Chief, it is my honor to congratulate Kat on a well-deserved promotion. At this time, I'd like to have her son come down. You want to come on down, too? All right, buddy, here you go. You actually have to put this on a shirt. You can't keep it. There you are, Kat. Thank you very much. Thank you.
So Madam Mayor, if I could just say a couple of words. I just want to congratulate both of you. Welcome additions to the Cloverdale Police Department. Had the pleasure of working with Kat some years back. And Sal, I didn't get an opportunity to congratulate you when you were hired a year ago, but congratulations, and we're happy you're here, and thank you.
The comments from council? Okay.
So I would just like to say thank you, Kat, because, you know, it warms my heart. I always say this when we have a Cloverdalian that was born and raised here, working and running the city, and I just think that's fantastic. I think I saw Jason back there somewhere as well, but congratulations and thank you.
It's very important that we continue to have such role models in town. So thank you again for your service.
And just really quick, I've probably known Kat since she was in diapers. And I worked a lot with Sal in my former profession, so I'd like to say we're very lucky to have both of them here, and thank you.
Thank you very much. So are we going to do the recognition of Craig?
No, Madam Mayor, I would like to table this one. I'd like to table C3 until Craig could be available.
Madam Mayor and members of our audience, the next item is a proclamation recognizing one of our most longstanding employees. He took a much-needed vacation and is not available to receive the proclamation tonight. My recommendation is we put this on the next agenda, where we can invite Mr. Johnson to attend and receive the proclamation in person.
That sounds good to me. Do we need, we don't need to do anything else, right?
We can re-agenda it.
Thank you. And at this point, we'll have a presentation on housing homeless needs by the regional representative, Steve Soto-Mayor.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. I'm really pleased to introduce Steven Soto-Mayor. Steven is the Housing Director for the City of Healdsburg. But in addition to his role with the city, he represents Northern Sonoma County on the Continuum of Care Board of Directors. The Continuum of Care is the county entity that oversees all, the majority, if not all of the funding for homelessness support activities. And he's been a very, very beneficial representative to have for Northern Sonoma County, including Windsor, Healdsburg, and Cloverdale, on the Continuum of Care, and is looking out for our best interests. He was invited this evening to provide an update on some of the activities at the county level, and this really does dovetail with our local efforts in our community advisory group for homelessness. And he's going to, again, provide us an update on some of the key initiatives. So with that, I'd like to turn it over to Mr. Soto-Mayor, and welcome here this evening. Steven, please take it away.
Good evening, Mayor Cruz, Vice Mayor Lance, members of the Cloverdale City Council, Steven Soto-Mayor, Housing Administrator for the City of Healdsburg, and also at-large member on the Continuum of Care Board, as the city manager just mentioned. Thank you for having me here today, and I'm happy to provide an update on what has been going on regarding those experiencing homelessness in Northern Sonoma County. If we could advance the next slide. What I'd like to go through today, and I do want to make an apology in advance, when I sent my original PowerPoint presentation that was included in your packet, the information from Reach for Home on the survey that they conducted was still for Healdsburg. So the slides that are in front of you today should be updated specifically to Cloverdale. I also want to mention that Margaret, slide from Reach for Home, the executive director, is in the audience as well. I'm going to go through the information, but she's available for any questions that you might have on that. I'd like to just go through really quick. I always find it helpful, terms, definitions, and the system of care overview that we have in Sonoma County. Update on what's going on in the Continuum of Care, local and regional needs survey, which I alluded to, the Reach for Home is conducted, Northern Sonoma County Homeless Task Force and plan. And then finally, an update on what is going on in Northern Sonoma County related to Project Home Key, which is a state program to purchase non-traditional housing, such as motels and hotels, for use as transitional housing. If we can go on the next slide, please. Just for your reference, and I won't spend a lot of time on it, I always do find it helpful that when we throw out acronyms, that it's good to have at least a reference to point back to. So this is just for the benefit of both the public as well as the council, just to refer to some of the terms that I'll be using tonight. Next slide, please. I think in putting things in context, it's really important to talk about how a system of care works and how, you know, those that are experiencing homelessness access services. I think as we have progressed through the Northern Sonoma County Homelessness Planning Task Force, which, you know, some of you are members of, the important thing is to understand how intake works. And what we lack in the North County, and has been a longstanding issue, is immediate assistance. When you can look at this, you know, we have outreach teams to Reach for Home that go through Northern Sonoma County. There's often basic needs programs. For example, in Healdsburg, we have St. Paul's Winter Shelter. I know that there's mobile shower services that operate in the North County. And those programs refer to what we call the Coordinated Assessment System or Coordinated Entry System. Oftentimes, we evaluate the, you know, acuity of an individual that's experiencing homelessness or a family, and they are placed into appropriate housing. As you can see in the flow chart, quite often, what we do find is that rapid rehousing, which is a well-funded program and generally administered through nonprofits or the county, helps those that are recently homeless or are on the verge of homelessness. What we definitely do not have within this is the interim housing and enough permanent supportive housing. You can see how that flow really affects how we place individuals into appropriate services and housing. Next slide, please. So I did want to give an update on the Continuum of Care as your board representative on that, you know, countywide board that mainly is the recipient of HUD-related funding and helps to coordinate homeless programs throughout Sonoma County. There's been quite a lot of activity. First off is the governance and representation. The COC Board, as many of you know, recently, about a year ago, discovered that it wasn't in conformance with HUD requirements and rebranded itself and put itself back together. Recently, we've been looking at governance issues and how to properly represent the county on that. As of today, like before this meeting occurred, we were looking at the final board governance structure. But one of the things that's important to note, and as many of you may be already very aware, is that we're looking at four at-large seats that would be regional representation, and one of those areas would be the North County, which would encompass Windsor, Cloverdale, and Healdsburg. And that position, as it currently is proposed, would be appointed through a mechanism that is deemed to be appropriate between those three cities to have representation. The second is the status of the Coordinated Entry Systems. I mentioned before, coordinated entry is what places people in appropriate services based on acuity. And so what's challenging oftentimes is that if you have people in geographical locations that are hesitant to relocate to different areas, oftentimes, they're overlooked in that process, and therefore, it's very important to have appropriate services within communities that can be accessed, because a lot of those experiencing homelessness in North Sonoma County do identify as that is their home, or that's where they would like to remain and be placed. And so the Coordinated Entry System, we got an update. There was an RFP that was put out for a provider. Unfortunately, there was no response to that. I know that there's some interest in the county acting as this kind of coordinated entry point, but we also today at the Continuum of Care Board authorized to put out another request for proposals for organizations that would be willing to take on this role. The Strategic Planning Committee is something that I co-chair with Tom Schwedholm from Santa Rosa, and they are currently looking at how do we define our system of care? How do we make it more efficient? And more importantly, there's a next round of each half-three funding that's coming through, which is a combined total between the county and the Continuum of Care of about $8 million-plus that's coming into the county to address homelessness. And as a part of that, we need an action plan. We recently just put out an RFP to get a consultant to help us put together that action plan, and as well as the overall strategic plan for the entire county. So those activities are going on right now. Currently, there's groups meeting around housing, a coordinated system of care, which is ensuring that services are not duplicated and they're maximized for efficacy in addressing homelessness. And then finally, we're also looking at increasing opportunity for income, which would be safety net programs such as TANF, CalFresh, Sonoma Works, and other programs that generally are used in conjunction with traditional homeless services, but also provide increased opportunities to help individuals break the cycle of homelessness or poverty within communities. So those are being integrated as we go forward. And then finally, funding opportunities, the Continuum of Care Competition Renewal, which is about $3.9 million of core rapid rehousing, permanent supportive housing money for the, you know, the system HMIS, which is our data-related system in provision of homeless services. Those are going to be currently renewed and looked at. And furthermore, as of Tuesday, the county also looked at additional funds to help support Project Home Key projects, which is a state program to purchase housing for use as interim housing or non-congregate shelter. And those are some of the things that are coming down. Quick other highlights that's going on with the Continuum of Care is that we have a lived experience input. We're going to have two new advisory bodies, which one would be the Lived Experience Advisory Board for Adults Experiencing Homelessness, and the Youth Action Board for youth between 18 and 24 who are also experiencing homelessness. They will help provide key input to the COC Board in designing our system of care as we go through the strategic planning process. And then finally, emergency housing vouchers are out there right now. They're being deployed by the County of Sonoma Housing Authority and the City of Santa Rosa Housing Authority. There's about 250 vouchers for individuals and families that are experiencing homelessness. And so, you know, that is another program that's being provided through the Continuum of Care. If we could jump to the next slide, please. And so what this is, is that, you know, during COVID, we didn't do what we traditionally call it's like a homeless time, point-in-time count that's required by HUD, the Department of, US Department of Housing and Urban Development, to enumerate those that are experiencing homelessness, whether they be in shelter or they be in housing, for example, RVs or other, you know, types of housing that are not considered suitable outside. And so Reach for Home went out, and they did do a survey of those that are experiencing homelessness. If we could jump to the next slide. And so these are what the results came back with. About 17 people were surveyed in Cloverdale. Still an ongoing effort. About five women, 12 males, all surveyed, considered this area their home. 10 stated that they want a state in Northern Sonoma County, mostly in Cloverdale, and four had no preference to location. If you look at housing data, only three said that they don't want help or housing. Six would consider safe camping, and two said safe parking would help them with their experience in homelessness. 13 indicated that they would take either a tiny home dwelling or an apartment unit. If we could jump to the next slide, please. And then other data, there's about two that are okay with sobriety requirements, and that definitely ties into maybe potential, you know, access to units that are already existing. Eight are ready for case management, which is a sign that they're ready to help. None identified as a sex offender. Two have regular work, and five are actively looking for work in landscaping, construction, hospitality. And so what does this tell us? It tells us that quite often, what we see as a missing piece in Northern Sonoma County, as evidenced through what I'll talk about next, is the Northern Sonoma County Homelessness Planning Task Force, is that interim and immediate solutions are generally, could lead to positive outcomes. If we can jump to the next slide. is that interim and immediate solutions are generally, could lead to positive outcomes. If we can jump to the next slide. Oh, and there's a little bit of additional data. And like I said, Margaret's like from Reach for Home is here if you have any additional questions. But these were some of the needs that they identified based upon the data that they came, which identifies about a minimum of 14 to 15 additional units in Cloverdale. Continued case conferencing. Continue to identify and shelter individuals who qualify for emergency housing vouchers, since those are available today. Maybe some job programs that are available currently through the Sonoma County. And continue to work with the City of Cloverdale and other partners to implement a full by names list model. One of the advantages that I think that we have in the North County is that our homeless population is not too large, that we can't have an idea of how to size systems and to ensure that we could probably achieve functional zero based upon our knowledge of those experiencing homelessness. If we jump to the next slide. And as a part of that, I do want to mention that, you know, that this hasn't been done in isolation. There's been a Northern Sonoma County Homelessness Task Force that was convened by Supervisor Gore. It got a little bit sidetracked because of fires and COVID, and it took much longer than we expected, but there is a final draft plan that was completed on May 26, 2021. I know that I intend to take that later to my city council to look out for adoption. But the planning period covers through June of 2026, and the work groups focused on the five strategies, which, next slide, please. The strategies cover quite a bit, and some of this might be redundant, as I know many of you have been involved in this process, but engagement, provide immediate low-barrier access to emergency shelter and interim housing, conduct street outreach, continue to implement coordinated entry. And then finally, one of the most important is to provide homelessness prevention assistance. It's much, it's always been proven throughout many studies that it's easier to prevent homelessness than it is actually to address it once it occurs. These are all very common strategies that you can find out through most plans. But one of the benefits of this North County plan is that it definitely led to higher collaboration. And the next slide can talk a little bit more about why that's good. One of the main points that was identified in the Northern Sonoma County planning process was that the need for interim shelter, the need for being able to finally offer a bed to an individual within the region that they're in has been a high-pressing need within our communities. On October 18th, I took an item to the Hillsburg City Council that approved submission of a Project Home Key grant application for a 22-unit motel in Hillsburg for the purpose of interim housing. I'm proud to say that as of today, in conjunction with Reach for Home and Burbank Housing, that that application was submitted. The project is located in the south area of Hillsburg. And we applied for those experiencing chronically homeless, for those that are chronically homeless, for an interim housing solution that would allow for stays up to 30 days renewed, up to, I believe, a total of 180 days if, you know, depending upon the case management. But this really fills a missing piece that's been there for a while. This project was informed by the work that Reach for Home did by reaching out to those experiencing homelessness and realizing that this was a preference. I think there's other areas to point to that you can look at, other programs like Los Gillico, where the housing placement rate out of such programs has been extremely high, at 38%, therefore demonstrates some level of success. It's anticipated the total cost of this will be about 6.2 million, and operational costs will be somewhere around, and that number updated a little bit, somewhere right around $900,000 a year to operate the site. The good news is that Project Home Key does provide operational funds as well as capital funds. And our county partners at the CDC, as well as the Continuum of Care, most recently made money available as well for projects that are successful. So we're hoping to find, you know, a way to operate this project fully funded through county and state funds for at least the first four years. Project Home Key pays for three years. And so that application went in. We'll hear back in 45 days if we were funded. Obviously, Reach for Home would be the operator of that site. And they are a North Sonoma County-based nonprofit with a mission to end homelessness in Northern Sonoma County. And so I think this is a great step that came out of the Northern Sonoma County Homelessness Planning Task Force. And we're hoping that we're successful in the submission. And so next slide. And with that, I conclude my presentation. I know that Margaret's in the audience as well if there's questions, but I'm happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
There is a hand raised, Mayor.
Please allow.
Angela Cordova.
Hi there. So what's your plan for the drug addicts who do not want to accept help or resources? And what's your plan for the, the people that are suffering from mental health illnesses that don't even have the capacity to make a decision regarding their living situations? What's your plan for that? Because that seems to be our major problem here in Cloverdale, rather than just sticking a shelter here and calling it good. Reach for Home has plenty of houses here that they could house people, and Hillsburg's not that far. So the people that refuse services and that suffer from drug, drug addictions and mental health illness, what's your plan for that?
Sorry, Madam Mayor, we also have Margaret. If we could elevate her, she will be the service provider on site. She has her hand up. If you would like me to address that question directly, Madam Mayor.
Margaret is also there.
Hello, everybody. So what we've been doing to address Ms. Cordova's question is we're taking the, the high-needs individuals in our by names list that Stephen was describing, and the people with the high needs who have, need the mental health support and who are dependent on various substances. We've been working with the City of Cloverdale, Chief Ferguson. We're working on our first one or two cases right now where we're trying to remove the barriers within the county to get those people into the right type of housing and care in the county. So knowing that not everybody, great point, Angela, not everybody is going to be successful independently in housing. It's just not going to work. So what's the solution for them? So we're pulling together, oh, Alexander Valley is also involved. I think there are about five or six of us on the calls. St. Vincent de Paul. And we're all taking each of those people one by one and strategizing and figuring out how we can get them into the system, remove the barriers, and get them a solution that that should be for them. So that's what we're working on.
You guys should focus on Laura's Law and put your energy there instead of wasting your time and resources.
Great point, Angela. And I think the City of Cloverdale sent a letter of support for Laura's Law, and Reach for Home's doing the same. That's another thing that we're tackling as well. So great point.
And is there any joint collaboration from Cloverdale regarding overseeing when you guys are involved in a count that has to do with Cloverdale? And I'm sure you already know why. We don't have to get into that tonight.
We would be happy to involve anyone in Cloverdale to oversee that. That's not a problem on our end at all.
Yeah, I just want to make sure of that.
Definitely. I think the next one is, is January, February timeframe. And yep, definitely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other hands?
Yes, Mayor, there is Ms. Fabian.
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
All right, good. I just got home, so I logged in a little late, so I didn't see the whole presentation by Sotomayor, but I think there needs to be a little bit more X. There's a lot of big words being thrown around here, like low-barrier access. I apparently know what that means, which means no background checks, especially sex offenders. They don't have to be off of drugs to go into these shelters, which is, being a person that's worked with chronically homeless for seven years, no, that's, that's a sticky point, because when you do gain their trust enough and get them into a shelter the first place, they don't feel safe that there's other drug addicts still using around them. Just, just that point. Also, I'm a little skeptical about this county partners, especially the CDC, for reasons I won't mention, but also let me point out, just for anyone that, that might watch this later, in November 2018, Cloverdale signed a homeless emergency declaration with the urgency of the county, Michael Gauss to be specific, to hopefully, well, to supposedly qualify to get a special HEAT fund that was offered by the state. Our city council signed it, and it was pushed under the rug. It wasn't, there was no public discussion, and hoping that we would get some funds. The fact is Cloverdale didn't qualify because we didn't have a homeless plan in place. Actually, who got the money? Reach for Home and Hillsburg. Cloverdale got nothing. That is why we're a little skeptical about accepting all these big-word help. Thank you.
Any other hands? Would you like to comment on, on Ms. Fabian's statement, Margaret or Stephen?
I see no other hands, Mayor.
Do we have any other hands?
Any other hands?
Okay.
No, we do not.
Okay, thank you. Please make sure that we keep panelists. And Stephen and Margaret, do you have any comments on the last statement?
My only last statement is just, thank you for inviting Stephen here tonight, and just thank you so much for the collaboration and for trying something new and trying to help people who are high-needs and case conferencing and, and just digging in and, and working with us. We just really appreciate it.
For me, I just want to say thank you, Madam Mayor, and to the council for the invitation to talk today. I'm happy to be a resource as a member of the Continuum of Care Board. You know, I'm keeping the best interest of the North County in mind. I think that we have a real opportunity here to make a difference and to change the course of what is status quo and start to make demonstratable, you know, changes that will, will help maybe inform that we can change the, the course of homelessness in the Northern County. Thank you.
Does anyone in the council want to make any comments on this? First, Councilmember Paula, and then Vice Mayor Lance.
Well, thank you, Madam Mayor. Just a couple of quick comments. First of all, thank you for all your hard work on this. This is a very difficult thing, and it's no easy solutions, and I commend you all for all your hard work on it. The one area, you know, that I just want to touch on are, Angela did mention it, about those that refuse the help. They basically in denial. They're, they need to be put into detox. They have mental health. And they refuse any attempt to help them. And I really think it's time that we look to our legislator to get them involved in the conversation on how we can work with, get some laws in place that give us some type of authority to put them into detox, to go through and to maybe work on these people that have the need, but they're not willing to go voluntarily for, you know, for a duration of time, and that time needs to be worked out. But I really think that conversation. So I'd encourage you to invite staff from our Senator McGuire's office and Senator, and our Assembly Member Wood's office to participate in these meetings, to talk about the what-ifs and how do we work with those that absolutely need help but refuse it? And how can we put some tools in place to help us work with them to get them that help? Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I won't repeat a lot of what Councilmember Paula has stated, but I'd like to thank Stephen for being here and being part of our committee for the county, and Margaret for the hard work you're doing with our local homeless community and the coalition that you're taking part in and actually helping these individuals. Instead of looking at it as a talking point in a meeting every month, we're actually making a difference. The group that you guys are working with, coming together and have formed and are helping individual needs versus the big picture is actually going to make a difference in our town. So my question to you is this, Margaret or Stephen, either one. As you know, our population is a little bit different here in Cloverdale with our homeless. We have approximately, what people don't know, about 92 that are technically homeless. They're couch surfers, things like that. Most of them, we have found, don't qualify in any way for any vouchers or any help. I have sent and worked with Margaret on a couple of test cases. We have people that have simple assault charges that live on, live on the river that want help and can't get it. We have people that have alcohol issues. They want help. They can't get it because they won't go to a program, so they can't get any type of housing. I have a single father who has had to give up his daughter now, Margaret, because he can't get enough, any help, and he can't have her sleeping on a couch. So, or in a car. I'm looking for the answers for our population, because as the representative for Cloverdale, I don't want to bring more people to my town and not help the ones that we currently have. So I'm looking for the answers for my community as well as yours. And I want to know how your 22 units will help us so that we can in turn help you with whatever we decide to do. Any, any answers or anything new since we've talked, or anything you can help me with, Stephen, that you might be able to tell our public that your 22 units at approximately $280,000 per unit and $42,000 a year per guest will cost? How does that help Cloverdale? And what can we do to help you if, if you're helping us? Because we want to work with you, obviously.
And I'm happy to answer, maybe not specific to the populations that are harder to serve. I think Margaret maybe can talk on those, but I do hear you that quite oftentimes that when we have definitions within categories of homelessness, that they don't always fit the program. Oftentimes, programs are written, and you try to fit people to them, whereas we should be writing programs that meet the needs of individuals. And what we're hoping to be able to do is, of course, as a continuum of care, you know, shelter assets and housing assets are part of a regional, if not county-wide, asset to address homelessness. I think in further conversations, you know, I think what was difficult about the Project Home Key was, one, learning that a site was available that would be potentially acceptable for the grant and being able to put that together in three weeks. And, you know, I tip my hat to the project team with Margaret and Burbank Housing and working collaboratively to get the application in. I think this is where really that conversation begins. And how we can all work together to utilize this to reduce homelessness across the board. Just like, as I said on the Continuum of Care Board, we look at it from a countywide perspective, but we also don't forget that we wear another hat. So I'm happy to have that conversation. You know, I think the first step here is to see if we get funded, but if we do get 22 units, I know they can make a big difference.
I can add just a little bit to that. It is a housing-first model, so there will be very low barrier to people getting access to the proposed site. So that should help a lot of people who aren't fitting into those other programs or boxes. And then I'll also say, in addition to that, just as a side note, because of these vouchers that are being infused into the county, we're actually getting people to move up out of our partnership home in Cloverdale, which will then allow more people to move in. We just need to find units for them, but they are getting their vouchers. So there's, you know, we're creating a system where people can come in. So there's, you know, we're creating a system where people can come in and get help and move up. And then meanwhile, we're tackling those high-needs individuals separately, but the shelter is for North County and we will be looking at Cloverdale unsheltered individuals to also get into the system of that shelter and to case manage them and to get them help. And there'll be a mental health services provider on site, we'll have four case managers, we'll have an art therapy program, there's a place for their dogs to be, dogs are welcome. There'll be areas for their personal belongings, all of those sorts of things. So, and Cloverdale is included in that, unsheltered individuals.
I look forward to the next year working with you and making this happen.
I repeat the thankful thoughts that Councilmember Paula and Vice Mayor Lance have expressed. I have been working in collaboration for a while now and I really see the results. It is always necessary to think outside of the box and a lot of that has been done here in Cloverdale. I also want to acknowledge the fact that you have been very open to the suggestions by Vice Mayor Lance and our city staff, and that is the way to go forward. So thank you very much and look forward to our next 7:00 meeting.
Thank you.
Now, David, do you have anything else?
Yeah, we remember Paula, and I think we'll see if that one I are and if Margaret's like, they're doing an interview providing that data, that they are, you know, part of a mayor of our, you know, collective, regional team addressing homelessness. And I think we, you know, we continue as staff to look forward for their, representing Cloverdale as part of Northern Sonoma County and working closely with Margaret at Reach for Home on, you know, kind of the specific case management and addressing those, you know, the homeless, really on a one-by, person-by-person basis. So they're a real asset to have as part of our resource to address homelessness. And again, just want to extend the council's gratitude and thank them for taking time out of their evening to present to the council tonight.
Okay, thank you and good night. Now, we're going to move on to the consent calendar. All items under consent calendar will be considered together by one action of the council unless any council member or member of the public requests that an item be removed and considered separately. Are there any changes, deletions?
Madam Mayor, I would like to pull item, the minutes, D1. There needs to be a correction on that. So, or I could tell you what the correction is and then we can pass it as amended. And the correction would be on item under professional services agreement with West Yost Associates. It shows that it was I3, no 1, absent 1, and it was actually 5O. So that should be five Is. That's the correction.
So, can we go ahead and approve the corrections as stated by Councilmember Paula, please?
Yeah, well, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the consent calendar as amended.
A second.
Okay, and can we get the roll call, please?
Councilmember Paula?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Lance?
Aye.
Councilmember Bagby?
Aye.
Councilmember Walter?
Aye.
Mayor Cruz?
Aye.
Passes 5-0, thank you.
Okay, and we'll go ahead and move on to communications. David, please.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, under communication, there is correspondence dated October 19th. This is addressed to Mayor Cruz and members of the council. It's a request from Ms. Shirley Davis, who's a Cloverdale resident, to establish an ordinance prohibiting the sale and use of fireworks in Cloverdale. I assume there's a reference to the currently permitted sale and use of safe and sane fireworks. The reason cited for in the memo includes drought conditions and concern regarding wildfires. And there's requesting a council take up consideration of a proposed ban or ordinance that would prohibit their use. This correspondence is, again, for council's consideration and council can provide direction as they see fit regarding this particular communication.
Okay, any comment from council on this issue? Go ahead, Councilmember Bagby.
Well, this is certainly not the only communication we've received from constituents with these concerns and, you know, I think that in the wake of the recent election that it would be appropriate for Cloverdale to revisit this and for this to come back to the council as a future agenda item.
Councilmember Walter?
No, I did want to say something, but I'll just, I'll save it for another day.
Any other comments?
Well, Madam Mayor, if I may, I just want to say this subject, we went into great depth on this, but I don't remember exactly how many years back it was, but it was substantial. We had an ad hoc, Councilmember Walter and myself served on that. We spent several months going, meeting with public hearings on that, came back to the council at that time. So I think it would be timely to revisit the subject, see where it goes. So maybe you may want to consider putting it on, I would suggest, a subcommittee agenda for further discussion.
Thank you.
And I would go one step further and say, instead of doing a subcommittee agenda, if we've discussed this at length, year after year, I would say we have a special meeting for this fireworks only because you know it's going to be a four-hour conversation.
Do you want to say anything? No? No? Okay. I suggest that we go ahead and bring it back to council. There has been all sorts of conversations, meetings and so on. We could pull out a whole collection of communications and discussions in council. I think it's time to bring it back for alternatives to council because people have already spoken their mind. We do know that this community is quite divided on the issue and it's time to resolve it. So I suggest that we work on bringing it back to council for possible action.
So, Madam Mayor, if I may just, I'd like us at least to consider, and I know this is not an agendite items, but when it does come back, we should be looking at putting it out for an advisory vote of the people because there's those that want them and there's those that don't. There's no middle ground. And so it's really, I've heard from many, many people that want them banned and then I know there's a strong support by certain groups that want to maintain the legal. And I really think it's time that the community should be allowed to weigh in on this and because we're just going to be back to those that want them, those that don't, and it's really going to be a very difficult, I think, the people will speak clearly.
So what do you mean by allowing?
Well, we need to maybe have the city clerk come back with, if we decide that we want to put something on the ballot, it could be an advisory vote of the people and what would be the timeline and what the steps we need to do to do that? I think that would be the best course we could take because I don't think we're going to, we could spend hours and hours and hours and hours. I don't think we're going to get very far.
Yes, I do agree that a forum to discuss it is going to be a repeat of everything that has been happening. So it's time for us as a council to come up with a resolution and for us to have choices and see how we move forward.
I have to agree, Madam Mayor. We'd be regurgitating the same stuff that we've been talking about for years. I think what we have to do as a council is lay out the steps to get it on the ballot and just proceed that way. So I'm not sure which subcommittee that would be and who could, the subcommittees that could guide us through that process of getting it on the ballot.
I would say would be administration.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, I think it's really council's choice which subcommittee, if you want to sign it to a subcommittee, but I do think this is, this matter of fireworks has largely been discussed at the Finance, Admin and Police Subcommittee. So for consistency purposes, that certainly would be appropriate. Otherwise, if council really wants to kind of oversee, what I'm hearing or seeing from council is kind of support or consideration of a potential ballot measure, what staff could do is bring back a, because it's not agendized tonight, is bring back a discussion I invite council to give more specific direction on a ballot measure and, you know, have the full council kind of weigh in on their perspective relative to, you know, placing a measure on the ballot and what that might look like and then assign it to a subcommittee to work out and refine the details of the ballot measure itself. But otherwise, you could do either, you could assign it directly to a subcommittee and request a recommendation and have it be brought back or be brought back to council first for kind of some additional consideration around what it seems to be unanimous consensus for a ballot measure.
Well, I think if we bring it back to the subcommittee, it would be to iron out the details, but I think we need to bring it back to council to decide what action we're going to take and how it's going to be processed. Do you have to leave direction, David?
I think I hear council's direction is to present some alternatives to council relative to a ballot measure and seek council's direction on how best to proceed, including assigning it to a council's subcommittee.
Did you have anything else to say?
All right, thank you very much. And at this point, we'll go to public hearing. Public hearings items will begin at the time shown and F1 is adopting resolution to approve an initial study and mitigated negative declaration for the, by Duke Calle Senior Housing Project. So Kevin?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. We do have a PowerPoint, Lori, I don't know if you have that available. So this item is a proposed annexation, general plan amendment, pre-zoning and ordinance amendment. This is, represents a big step in the growth of the city to the south. I'm going to go through just a couple real quick slides to talk about a little bit of the background and the entitlements being sought, and then I'm going to turn it over to the development team who's going to give you a little bit more detail on the project and are available for questions. So, I don't know.
Lori, if you can bring up the presentation at this time? Dry Creek?
Can we go to the next slide, please? Next slide.
Seligini Camp?
Next slide, please. So just a little background, the project has been around for a couple of years. Back in March of 19, the council did adopt a resolution allowing the pre-zoning application to start, and that's kind of our first step in any annexation project, is to bring it to council to say, hey, there's someone looking to annex into the city, you give the yes or no there. We've been working with the developer since that time to get a complete application, which we did, and the sequel was completed in June of 2021. And the planning commission reviewed the project in September of this year and provided some great comments and also provided resolutions recommending approval of the project. Next slide. So just real quick, and they may repeat this, so I'll be really fast. It is 87 acres of annexation along South Cloverdale Boulevard. On 29 of those acres, there's going to be 24 detached restricted affordable units, restricted to 55 and older, and one manager's unit for a total of 25. There's a community building that will serve the community and, of course, all the infrastructure needed to support the project, roads, water, wastewater. And there's discussion about private open space above the 400 elevation mark as required by the general plan. Next slide, please. So what they're, the entitlements that are required for the project to move forward is, of course, the sequel, which is a mitigated negative declaration, and that was an evaluation of the environmental impacts on the project, on the area. Design review, so that's taking a look at the houses and the community center, the site layout, and a general plan amendment, and that has to do with land use. I'll talk about that in just a second, and then the ordinance, and then ordinance for the pre-zoning. Next slide. So this is kind of the area, and I know they have a much better slide in their presentation, but this just gives you an idea of where it is. Next slide, please. Just want to talk a little bit about the proposed zoning changes. You can see on the top right, they want to amend, take eight acres out of the general industrial and change that to general commercial, and that's up there in the, you can see the arrow. And then there's also a proposal to change it from low density to medium density, and I want to give you a little bit of background on that. The reason for that is this is a single-family home project, but it's not a subdivision, so all the homes will sit on one parcel. So according to our code, that cannot occur in the low density, so it has to be medium density. The density on the project really is only, it's around three units per acre, just a little below that. Next slide. Planning Commission, as they always do, you know, dove into the project pretty deep and provided some comments. Some of these comments ended up in amending some of the conditions of approval. Some of them will be handled at the plan check stage, but you had to do with purple pipe, the outdoor watering, and how that should be ready for reclaimed water. Resiliency, so this is kind of a planning commission topic that I think has been really helpful for a lot of these projects, and it's really asking the applicant to think about resiliency in the homes, you know, in terms of backup power, but particularly in the community building, which they can talk a little bit more about. They've agreed to provide battery backup and solar, I think, or we'll have them describe what they're going to do, and that is a condition of approval. And there was some discussion about the compatibility of land use near there on some of the vacant land that will result from this annexation, and that's really going to be subject to what the zoning is at the time, and we can't really condition the project to, you know, have certain land uses on the general industrial and the general commercial. Also, I want to point out, there is one change in the condition number eight. It describes a 45-year restriction of the units. We really need that to be 55 years in order for us to count towards our arena, as well as they're asking for a small parking concession and the legislation requires a 55-year if they want to get the concessions for being an affordable project. Next slide. So again, we have a couple resolutions and we can come back to this at the end if you so want to entertain these resolutions, but we have a resolution for the mitigating neg deck, a resolution for the design review, general plan amendment and pre-zoning, and then the introduction of an ordinance for the zoning. Kevin, I don't know, that's all I have, so I don't know if you want to. Yeah, Lori, can you advance the slide? So just let us know when you want to advance.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Kevin. Good evening, Mayor Cruz and members of the council. My name is Kevin Dobell, I'm with Lakewood Associates. We are the lead consultant on this project and have been working on this for quite a few years. I wanted to just start by introducing the team. Next slide, please. The applicant.
Next slide, Lori.
Next slide, please. The applicant is a Dry Creek Rancher, a band of Homo Indians. Next slide, please. Joining us today is Chairman Wright and members of the Dry Creek Tribe. They're here tonight in case there are any questions, obviously. They've been very supportive and very good partners and really willing to. They've been very supportive and very good partners and really willing to put a good foot forward to see this project happen. The design team for this project is Lakota Associates for civil engineers, land surveyors, geologists and planners. The architect is Travoy, and the landscape architect is Ann Baker. Next slide, please. So a little bit of background, Kevin touched on this slightly, but I just wanted to kind of articulate that this really started with a vision back in two thousand, early two thousands, for a expansion of the city limits and to create an area southwest of the freeway that would serve some light industrial and industrial uses for the city. Very good forward-thinking planning by the city at that time. In two thousand and ten, the urban growth boundary was adopted by about the citizens. Also, in two thousand and ten, the master plan, master water plan was prepared that helps facilitate identifying infrastructure needs for the area. There was also a master sewer plan also prepared. In two thousand and fifteen, there's a general plan update. In two thousand and nineteen, we came to the council, and I don't know if you all remember, but we had a lengthy discussion about what this project was, what we might be doing. It's a very large area of Cloverdale, and it's something that's been talked about for many, many years. Thankfully, you guys were supportive of us moving forward, and we endeavored to complete the process. Shortly after that meeting, we received quite a few comments from the community directly and through the press, questions about the project. So within a week, we actually scheduled a community meeting, and we hosted our own community meeting. We invited everybody, we met at the senior center. About thirty-five people showed up, we got some really good feedback, we were able to really address a lot of questions. I just wanted to point that out because it just shows the commitment of the tribe to really get information out there and answer questions. There have been several tribal membership meetings, and of course, just last month, we went to the planning commission and received our recommendation for approval. Next slide, please. So this slide is just a general overview. It's a little hard to see because the Zoom screen is covering up a portion of the property, but you can see that towards the left-hand side, there's a large green area, which is actually the Bumgarner Ranch project. That is actually now annexed into the city. Next slide, please. Just another view of some of the general plan, land uses in the county and in the city. As you can see, Kevin mentioned, low-density residential, general industrial are part of the zoning in the area. Next slide, please. So some of the properties that are part of this project, obviously you guys all probably remember the Bumgarner Ranch project, there's also the Vittner's Co-op project, so those are the two most recent annexations into the city. This project actually annexes several parcels, a parcel owned by the Cloverdale Unified School District, a parcel owned by the Smith family, a parcel owned by Beedaluma Butane, and two parcels owned by the Dry Creek Rancheria Tribe, and an additional parcel, which is known as Kelly Road, it's actually a county parcel that will also be annexed into the city. Next slide, please. This is just a little breakdown of how we're trying to segment out the light industrial and the general commercial, and then also the area to the bottom of the page is the senior housing development project. Next slide, please. Just an aerial photo for context, you can kind of see here, Kelly Road runs right through the middle, and the Vittner's Co-op building is up there in the middle top of the screen. Next slide, please. This is the area that would be annexed as part of this application. Next slide, please. Here's just a few site photos for context, you can see that site's very natural right now, it had previously been sort of a, what I would call, a small ranch or homestead. It contained some barns, it contained a manufactured home. There are some existing infrastructure improvements that typically go on in that type of property, some drainage culverts, very wooded up in the hillsides. It's actually a very beautiful piece of property. Next slide, please. This is just an overall view of the city's water master plan, and as you'll see, our project is located there down in the middle. We're actually bringing water pretty far to the south, and we're looping it all the way through the site. The water system infrastructure improvements for this project are really the catalyst for what boosts pressure for the whole area. Actually, right now, the fire flows are marginal, and until this loop is actually made, there's very little in the way of getting actual fire flows down to this area. And this is all part of the city's forward-thinking planning efforts that go back to two thousand and ten. This project is really the project that is going to install this infrastructure. Next slide, please. Real quick on the sewer, this project will install an area-wide sewer lift station, which is actually a pump station. It will serve a very large area, much larger than the area that we're annexing, and also is being sized for any potential future land use that might occur in those areas. This is an important step, we want to get it right. We're spending a lot of time and effort in doing that, and we think it's just the right way to go. And thankfully, the tribe is willing, a willing property owner who has got some funding and is willing to install that infrastructure. Next slide, please. As far as public improvements, this would reflect the sewer and water infrastructure that comes up Kelly Road. Also, a significant improvement to Kelly Road right now, which is a gravel road, it would become a thirty-seven-foot wide city street. It would be a public road, be constructed by the project, and it would serve all of the properties adjacent to it. Next slide, please. Lastly, we did complete an initial study, and we're looking for certification of that environmental document. It's quite lengthy, we spent a lot of time doing it, but we think it's solid, and we believe it gives enough information for you all to make an informed decision about this project. Next slide, please. So now I'd like to just briefly turn it over to Bruce Shimizu, our senior project manager and housing specialist with Lakota. Bruce is just going to run through really quickly some of the design elements of the project. This will also give you some opportunity to ask questions after our slide presentation. So Bruce, thank you.
Hi, everybody, it's like old home week. It's been a number of years since I appeared in front of council, but I know some of you and some of you really well. And it's good to, it's good to be here, and as I was driving in today, I was happy to see the Cherry Creek site under construction, and that was, I can't even remember how many years ago we started working on that, but it's good to see it moving along. I was wondering, can the city clerk move the image of, the Zoom image off the screen or something, because it blocks part of the images? Can you see what I'm talking about? If you can't, it's okay, it's just there's parts of some of the slides that are going to be blocked out. Well, as Kevin had mentioned, the development is, the actual development portion of the eighty-plus acres is only about twenty-five and twenty-five-point-eight acres. Oh, thank you, that's much better. And it's going to be, it's going to be rezoned to medium-density residential, the twenty-four affordable units and the one manager's unit, a community center, guest parking. An important part is a trail system that's open, that will be opened up to a private open space in the oak-studded hillside, which is something we're very proud of. Next slide, please. Kevin had shown some of the infrastructure that comes up Kelly Road, sewer, water, storm drain, the development of Kelly Road, and this is, these are the onsite improvements that we're going to be doing. We'll have a road that connects to Kelly that will lead into the development, and then loop back out to Dutcher Creek Road. And I'm sure you all know that South Cloverdale Boulevard turns into Dutcher Creek Road, so it'll loop around. So we'll have the sewer, water and storm drain, those will all be private utilities, as will the roads that lead into the development. Next slide, please. Oh, actually, could you go back for a second? There's something I want to mention that's really important. See how the, all of the units are clustered around the roads? And if you can see the contour lines, you can see that the hillside gets pretty steep. One of the things that we did in order to save as many oak trees as possible is we held the development as close to the roads and the more, the flatter parts of the site as possible. That way, we were able to minimize the tree loss and then, you know, maintain that intrinsic beauty that this hillside has. Next slide, please. Travoy does a lot of housing in Indian country across the western United States, and they've designed some really, what we think are really beautiful units that kind of match the rural character of Cloverdale. And the units that you see, the units A and B, you'll see that the images on the left, you see a driveway with a single-car garage, and then below it, you also see a rear of the unit with a garage door. So in a couple, in several of our units, we have rear entries for the garages so that they have front courtyards. But this gives you an idea of the aesthetics of the development, the planning commission was very pleased with the way the units look. So these are two-bedroom, one-bath units with a one-car garage, they range in size from eleven-hundred-and-seventy-six square feet to eleven-hundred-and-eighty-two. And then there is a manager's unit, which is a derivation of Unit B, which also includes a private office for property management purposes. Next slide, please. So this is, Ann Baker, landscape architect, put together a landscape plan for the development. And her initial concepts, she tried to carry through the entire development to preserve the existing trees, to tie them into a network of trees that we'll be planting, to preserve a existing water course that runs through the center of the site and ties into an existing storm drain system. So we're trying to preserve as much of that as possible, reduce paving so that we could encourage as much groundwater recharge as possible. Because of our recent experiences with fire and now our second year of drought, we all, drip irrigation is a standard in the west, rain gardens, paved areas that drain into the planting areas, drought-adaptive and drought-tolerant plants, then non-combustible zones, so we're trying to be fire-wise, and then the elimination of those ladder fuels within zero to five feet of, or within, within the planting areas, and then also to remove the combustible items like fences within zero to five feet of the homes. And then Ann's really good about the utilization of native and drought-resistant plantings, so she wants to use plant materials that are native to the site, they're wildlife-friendly, because there's a lot of nature that exists in the hillside now, and we want to encourage that, and then, you know, bring the songbirds, et cetera, down into the development so the seniors living there can enjoy that from their homes. We're going to be pairing our trees that we're planting with the rain gardens so that they'll have good chances of surviving during drought conditions. And then we do, we have set up hydro zones, so lich-type plants that have similar water uses will be irrigated together. And then the use of pollinator and bird-friendly plants is to kind of enhance that natural character. Next slide, please. We're really proud of the community center that Travoy has designed. It features a multi-use assembly area, a kitchen, an exercise room, private office that's used for non-clinical uses, and then the storage and mechanical rooms as well. And these, the multi-use room leads out into an outdoor space, I'll show you next. Next slide, please. So again, Ann's done a great job in creating, we have a covered entry, so there's a grand entry to the community center. We have an EV charging station, which ties in also with the rooftop PVs and battery backup that Dry Creek is trying to get funding for right now, so that'll help create a resiliency center here at the community center. Number three, there's a covered patio, there's a community garden, there's an outdoor gathering area that you see an image of in the lower left, you see the chairs around the fire ring and a group gathering area. And then six, in the lower left-hand side of that site plan, that's a pathway that leads up to the trails through the private open space. So we all know that, I think we all know, most of us are a little bit gray, that walking is one of the primary activities for seniors, as well as gardening, and then people watching. So we've designed spaces to kind of accommodate a lot of those kind of functions. Next slide, please. So these are some of the perspective images of the types of people that will be living at Duukhale. The tribe currently has a waiting list of forty-nine elders, and interestingly enough, ten of those households have minor children living with them. And then twenty-five percent of the elders on the list are part-time caregivers to children that, you know, related children during the work week and on weekends. They're low to moderate income, and as Kevin had mentioned, there is an affordability restriction of fifty-five years on the development. Some of the things that Dry Creek is really excited about being able to do with the residents or offer to the residents are things like the tenant readiness training, and you can see some of the courses that they would be offering to really enable the tenants to be, to get used to living in a rental situation like this, to be able to maintain their homes, to be able to have good positive relationships with their neighbors, to deal with their personal finances so they don't get in trouble. And then the prevention of elder financial abuse, it's a real, a very hot topic, and we find our seniors are highly susceptible to that, especially with the advent of the internet and access. Some of the weekly activities that'll be, that will hopefully be sponsored at the community center include traditional crafts, you know, like basket making, dance classes, language classes to try to teach the younger generation Southern Pomo, community gardening classes, fitness, and youth leadership classes. Being able to have seniors pass on information to the youth in the community is really important within the Dry Creek Rancheria community. Next slide, please. And I think, Kevin, did you want, where'd you go? Kevin wondered. Yeah, in addition to the community center having rooftop PVs, the individual units will have rooftop solar, and we're still looking to see if we can get financing for battery backup in the residential units, but there will be charging stations in the garages.
Thank you, Bruce. There's just a couple of, couple of items I want to close with. One, we're, we're, we tried to think of everything, we're doing our best. We also are very much aware of the urgency ordinance that you passed a while back regarding the drought. We are talking with the city, we are thinking internally about ways we can offset water use and demand on the city's system. There are opportunities such as water storage on-site, there are opportunities to potentially develop a well and use that for irrigation, which would save about seventy percent of the typical water use for a project like this. We're also very low on our water use in general, just with the design of the project and the units. So we're open and aware of the conditions of approval about future hookups related to water. We believe we have an ability to address that and offset impacts to the city. There's also flexibility built into our conditions of approval that allow us to explore options for water storage or even water site irrigation, and we're thankful to the staff for working with us through those. In addition, we know that at some point, and probably you've already talked about it, recycled water is something that's going to be required up and down the river. The state water board is probably going to tell cities that are discharging to the river that they're going to have to get out of the river. I know this personally because of my time with the city of Ukiah, and we developed one of the first recycled water systems north of Cloverdale along the North Russian River, and it's been very beneficial. So we are, we are designing the project to do the space planning necessary to allow for future installation of purple pipes. So we have not, we're not discarding it, we're not necessarily installing it right now, but we're going to do the space planning so that it'll be available. And the last thing I would like to say is that, this is a little bit personal to me because I think twenty years ago, this was talked about by my uncle, and he talked about the South Cloverdale annexation. And those of you who knew John Dobell probably knew that he did not spare details. details. So I picked up a lot from him, but I would say, tonight, I think you have an opportunity to fulfill on a vision that was thought about a long time ago, and it's finally come into fruition. So we're open to questions. The team is here, the client is here. Thank you for your time.
I open the floor for the council to comment on this project. Go ahead. And then Walter.
Thank you for a wonderful and thorough presentation on all aspects. And actually, just in case anybody's listening, I also want to commend the planning commission for doing such a great job. They, they really did a lot of heavy lifting on this, made some great recommendations. And I just wanted to comment, Bruce, on your comment about there being someone there to train people on how to live there. It's so funny, it seems like it's such a, it's just completely coincidentally, a friend of mine sent me a New York Times editorial today, I think it was just within the last day or two, about cohousing. And I, it was a very lengthy but well-written piece about cohousing, and I thought I knew a lot about cohousing. And one of the things that they mentioned in the editorial is that they, at this cohousing place in Maryland, they have a person who trains you how to live in cohousing. So it's something that, and I just saw that, I just read that article today, so when you mentioned it, I was like, okay, that's a real thing. So, because it is a transition when folks are coming from different kinds of housing to, you know, to live in a place like this. But I just think it's a, it's a lovely design. You've been very, very thoughtful. You've taken the comments of the community really to heart, and, and also, the comments of the planning commission really come out of, you know, the last couple of years in Sonoma County, the fires of 2017, 2019. I think we all had friends and family, we all had friends, I'll just, I don't think, we, I know, we all had friends and family, coworkers, loved ones, who lost their home or who have had difficulty or were displaced because of the fires, and or we saw seniors here in Cloverdale, and not, not just seniors, but, you know, the sensitive populations who during the PSPS and the, the power outage and the gas outage were truly suffering. And I think that the, you know, the planning commission's recommendations really came from that experience, that, that common experience that we all have of how fragile our existence here really is and how, you know, pretty much all new housing has to take that into consideration. And it goes for water as well. And I think that you've been, you've been very sensitive to the fact that, you know, the world has changed where, where water is concerned. And I am appreciative of the idea that you wouldn't have to rely on city water for the irrigation needs, because in the winter, most Cloverdale residents use about that 55-gallon per person per day number that the state board is trying to get all of us, was trying to get all of us to do during the height of the drought. And so I think that that's a really good place to start when you're looking at adding a, a development like this. So I really thank you for, wow, your, the longevity of this project, for sticking, sticking with this and listening to the concerns of the community, really incorporating them tonight. So, yeah, those are, those are my, that's, those are my comments. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Madam Mayor. And, you know, I hate it when Melanie goes first because she, she always says what I want to say, so, but I'm going to be redundant here for just a little bit. And a big thank you to our planning commission. I'll tell you, we really have, I've said this before, we really have a fantastic planning commission out now, and, and thanks to Raphael and Kevin for working with them. I really like the project, the way it's laid out. And two things that really excite me, Kevin, you spoke about it, and it's the irrigation well, not using affordable water to irrigate plants. So I encourage the purple pipe in a storage tank that would hold water from a well strictly for irrigation. And also the clubhouse to really be sufficiently backed up with generator for cooling stations in the summer, heating stations in the, in the winter if we should lose power. So those are the things, you know, more or less a self-sustainable little village there because we're seeing it now with the, with the blackouts that we've been having over the last few years, and everybody trying to get down to the, to the citizen's fair. It's nice if each individual development could be self-sufficient for a short period of time. So I'm, it's a great project. Look forward to it. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I agree with Councilmember Walter and Councilmember Bagby. I really think it's important to have the irrigation set up where it will be self-sustaining. I did have one question, and a while back, there was an article in the Press Democrat that talked about affordable housing fraud, and they talked a little bit about where people were able to rent that didn't qualify, they made too much money, and in some cases, people that qualified were overcharged. And so my question is, how is this going to be monitored and enforced to make sure that people, you know, currently going in and in the future will qualify for whatever the conditions are?
Yeah, thank you, Councilmember Paula. I actually would probably want to defer to your assistant city manager on that topic because we, and I think we can also bring Bruce in if he wants to try to answer that, but it really stems from the programs that you guys have adopted and, and the state programs that are out there that involve enforcement. Kevin?
Sure, thanks, thanks, Kevin. We'll be entering into an affordable housing agreement, and part of that agreement is that the applicants submit annually a report about who's living there and how they qualify. So that's really the way, and then I don't know, other funding you may be getting could possibly be even more stringent than the city if it's...
Yeah, other funding sources that the, that the Dry Creek Ranch area receives, they have reporting requirements. So there's compliance monitoring that's built into, or that's a requirement of receiving those, those federal funds. And if there's state funds that come in as well, they'll, they'll have that requirement as well. Those regulatory agreements that the tribe will have to sign in order to get those funds spell out what their obligations are, and monitoring is, is chief and important, important in that. And I think that article that you referenced, Councilman, the, the individual that's in question is, is not a nonprofit. It's a for-profit corporation, and that isn't the only thing that they've been accused of, you know, so...
I clearly understand. I very much wanted to tiptoe around it, but I wanted to get to the, to the meat of it is how is it monitored?
And that, yeah, and that is one of those, that is one of those things that the federal government and the state government and local as well have, have developed over time because of abuses that have happened in other parts of the country, that, that the compliance monitoring is there, that, that reports have to be filed regularly. So that intake, they've got to show the proof of income, et cetera, et cetera. So I don't think you have to really worry about abuses here in this development.
Great, well, thank you.
Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First off, thank you. I know we've been discussing this for several years, different hats in the past, and now I'm up here. And so I'd like to see the consistency in the, the way you've worked with us and with our community and everyone that's been involved in this project. So I want to start by saying thank you. I know I've probably had these questions answered in the past, but I'd like to get a lot of things out in public so more people can understand a lot of the stuff that I've been told by you guys and that's, you know, that's on the project. You've definitely agreed to be good neighbors with the people to the north of you with the school site, they don't have plans, but you guys have, you know, been very open and willing to help them with a lot. I'd like to hear that. You mentioned it's a 37-foot-wide road on Kelly Road. Is that something that you and the district or anybody have talked about? Or I don't know what's a road size if it's different for school sites, and I think there is. And I wasn't sure if you guys had discussed that, so I thought I'd ask the question if that's something that's been brought up.
Yes, we actually, I met last week with the superintendent of the school, and we went over the plans with her consultants, and offered any questions that were there, but I did, did explain the cross-section of the, of the street, the pedestrian improvements that are being constructed on the south side of the street, the bike lanes and the, the two-way street going in and out. We also talked about the opportunity for the school, depending on whatever happens with that property, until you really know what you're going to do, you can't necessarily size the road, but we've sized it for what would be about little, little more than, I think, what's required in the, in the general plan currently. And that's really all we have to go off of, but we did do a significant amount of infrastructure improvements on the south side to make sure that the pedestrian walkway, for example, is detached from the street. There's a landscape strip between the curb and the sidewalk, for example, there are bike lanes. And then, and the future development along the north, there may be need to be improvements there, but typically, they would be limited probably to pedestrian-type improvements or whatever onsite improvements might occur. So I think we've covered pretty much more than half of what would be needed there to serve all of those properties.
Then my next question, I, I know the answer, but I want to get it out as well. The lift station, you talked about it being big enough for everyone. If that was something that they did come in and put a high school on that site, or, because that's the largest school you would get, would that work for that as well?
Yes, it would. Actually, we, we did size the system for that type of use, actually.
And one of the other questions, and I think it's kind of was answered with Councilmember Paula, but I just want to clarify. I had a person, a couple of years ago now it's been, and it was a local tribe member, and they asked a question about elder abuse and having, I'll just say, parolee kids crashing in their parents' homes and taking advantage of them. You discuss the elder and financial abuse. Is that something that your manager and that you guys are looking at? I know that we've discussed this in the past, and you gave me a very good answer, and I loved it, and I just want to have you say it again because I thought it was great.
Yeah, absolutely, and I actually think the answer came from Chairman Wright of the Dry Creek Ranch area tribe, and I would invite him up to actually speak on that topic.
I would, I would love that because he, he was wonderful when we spoke, and I think that...
And as he, as he approaches, I would just simply say that we've talked extensively about management plans and how this project is going to be managed, because we know that you guys would be, people would ask those questions, and we ask them too. So, Chairman?
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Councilmembers, but, yeah, I can answer that, and we talked once before as well. And, I mean, our elders are very important to us. Right now, they're struggling. We had mentioned that we have about 49 that are on a waiting list right now. And, and as you mentioned, there, there are some trouble out there with our, you know, some people try to move in with, with the seniors and take advantage of them, but we won't be having, we'll have security, we'll have management, our board of directors will be on call at all times, we'll be visiting. So we'll have regulations that everybody will have to follow, and we want that place to be the safest place in Cloverdale, really. So we're, we just want to protect our, our elders and get them a nice place to live and, and very safe, so...
Thank you, Chairman. I, I look forward to projects like this and taking care of our, our elders. I really look forward to this one going through. I like balance in our community and the fact that you're doing a little bit of your general industrial with your commercial, a few houses, and we're not trying to cram 300 down our throats. I, I love it, and I look forward to it, so thank you.
Thank you very much, and I appreciate all your support.
Chairman, I will have some questions for you.
Sure.
Okay. I would like to know how the cultural asset that you're bringing to the community would be integrated with our senior center, the history center, and nonprofit organizations in town.
Well, if you, if you talk to any of our seniors and when they move out there, they have lots of stories, they know the culture, they know it better than anyone else.
Of course.
So, I mean, they'll be in the community. We also will be doing classes. Right now, we're starting language classes this Friday at our office, so it's just kind of trying to keep the culture going, and I, I know that with them in this community, everybody's going to learn more.
Yeah, I was perhaps looking more on what is the outreach plan that you have? What is the outreach plan to work with the different organizations? I don't want to feel that it's just an isolated community, that they can come out to our centers and that some of our community members will also be interested in learning, that there will be programs for, for us too.
Sure. I mean, I said, when, when our seniors move here, it's kind of the whole tribe also moves here. You know, we will be in the community, not just our elders, and, you know, it'll be open for everybody. So, I mean, again, we, we want to be partners with the community and work with, with everybody here. So, yes, I mean, we're, we're open to anything.
Thank you very much. As a linguist, I'm very curious to learn more about indigenous languages, and this is a great opportunity at home. And, and I also want to thank you for considering the landscape that is friendly to our reality. You know, sometimes there are expectations of lawns and naples and big rose bushes and so on, and it's okay to have one or two, but when it becomes like a pattern, it's, it's not really environmentally friendly. And I thank you for considering a landscape architect that takes all of that into account. And at the same time, we don't have to worry so much about irrigation if we use local plants. So thank you for that initiative.
Thank you. And we, and we will have, we'll be taking care of all the maintenance for the seniors or all the landscaping, everything, so everything will be nice and, and clean all the time.
All right. Okay, go ahead, Bagby.
Sorry, and a comment and a question for the, the chairman. I, I, just back to the landscaping for a second, I'll tell you, I had a dear friend who lived kind of smack dab in the middle of Clover Springs for several years, and she passed a couple of years ago. And one of the things that she lamented, when, when she came to my house, she saw hummingbird, humming, or hummingbirds and bees of all, five different varieties of bees. And she said, and she, she said, oh, I wish I had this at Clover Springs. And, because she was kind of in the, the middle of the subdivision and not on the edges where a lot of the, the, the more natural, you know, flora was located. And so I, I really commend you for integrating that into the design. And the other thing I wanted to offer and, or I'm curious about is, are, do you have any plans for a shuttle service, or are you interested in integrating the Cloverdale shuttle in, to serve your residents? Because that's something that obviously we would, we would look at in, in the future as well.
We, we actually have a shuttle service right now for our elders. I mean, we go out and pick up medication, lunches. We bring, we have, before COVID, we've done it once since COVID, but we do, every month, we do a senior, senior brunch up at River Rock Casino. So we'll pick up, we have three vans that will go out and pick everybody up and bring them up, and, just ones that can, but yes, we'll, we'll probably be looking for some services like that as well. I don't know if we'd be able to cover everybody if we have at least two people living in every home, so it's 50 people, so it'd be a little bit difficult.
And I would like to open to the public, are there any hands? And you know what? I am very sorry, but I haven't asked our student liaison for any kind of comments or input into this. Would you, before I go ahead and do that, would you please, do you have any comments, any questions, any insights to address the chair or the developers?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I think this is a wonderful new development that's being made, from what I've heard. This is very new to me, so I've just been trying to listen in and catch up with everybody. But, I mean, personally, I live like very close to Clover Springs, like my backyard connects right next to the Aris, and it's a wonderful community there. So this sounds something similar, from what I understand, different, but similar in a sense. So I'm excited to hear more of this, yeah.
Well, thank, thank you very much. Before you go to public comment, I would just wanted to tag on to one thing that, that the chairman spoke about, and I think it's important to note here is, there will, the tribe's willingness to actually not go through what would be considered a traditional tribal process to take this land and put it into a trust and actually keep it fee land, subject to all the same rules and regulations that any other development project would. I think that says a lot, and I think it also speaks to the mayor's point about integration in the community and not creating an isolated... in the community and not creating an isolated place for people, but really making it just part of the community. Thank you.
Do we have any hands in the public?
Seeing those hands raised, Mayor.
Thank you. So I'll bring you back. Do we have any more comments before we move on? Okay, so Kevin, what would be our next action?
Two resolutions and introduction of the ordinance for the zoning. Just point out the second resolution regarding the design review and the general plan will be amended to reflect a 55-year affordable restriction period, where it's written now it says 45. Condition number eight. So there's two resos and an ordinance.
Madam Mayor, I have one request. Could we get a pronunciation guide to make sure that we are saying the name of the project correctly?
It's B-D-U-C-A-L-E.
B-D-U-C-A-L-E?
Actually spelled phonetically, yes.
Till I get a motion?
I recommend the item by title only, Madam Mayor.
I'll second.
Laurie?
Well, I've got to read the, read the resolution. City of Cloverdale City Council Resolution from 2021. Resolution of the City of Cloverdale City Council Approving a Mitigated Negative Declaration and Mitigation Monitoring and Reporting Program, MMRP, Prepared in accordance with the California Environmental Equality Act for the B-D-U-C-A-L-E Senior Housing Addexation and Pre-Zoning Project on Approximately 46.96 plus or minus acres of undeveloped land located at 285 Kelly Road, APN 117-040-073 and -074.
Is there a motion and a second?
I'm the motion. Laurie, Melanie Bagby, and the second was Vice Mayor.
Lans, okay. Councilmember Bagby?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Lans?
Aye.
Councilmember Paula?
Uh?
Councilmember Walter?
I didn't, I didn't know.
Mayor Cruz?
Aye.
So Councilmember Paula is an aye.
I'm sorry.
Counsel, yeah.
It passes five to zero.
Yes.
Thank you. And then Resolution Attachment Two.
I'll make a motion for Resolution Number Two by title only. That's Vice Mayor Lans.
And Councilmember Paula will second that.
Reading Resolution of the City of Cloverdale City Council Approving a Design Review, General Plan Amendment and Pre-Zoning Approximately 87.11 Acres of Land Located at 28165 Old Redwood Highway, APN 117-040-055, 28001 Highway 101, APN 117-040-32, 235 Kelly Road, APN 117-040-73, and APNs 117-040-70 to 074 and 102 to the Single Family Residential R1, Two Family Residential R2, General Commercial and General Industrial M1 Zoning Districts.
As amended, right?
As amended with the 55-year.
Councilmember Lans?
Aye.
Councilmember Paula?
Aye.
Councilmember Bagby?
Aye.
Councilmember Walter?
Aye.
And Mayor Cruz?
Aye.
Passes five zero. Thank you.
And Attachment Three.
So Madam Mayor, I'll introduce for first reading by title only an ordinance of the City of Cloverdale Amending Title 18 Zoning of the City Municipal Code, Pre-Zoning Certain Properties Containing Approximately 87.11 Plus or Minus Acres of Land Located at 28165 Old Redwood Highway, APN Number 117-040-055, 28001 Highway 101, APN, APN Number 117-040-032, 235 Kelly Road, APN Number 117-040-073, and APNs 117-040-070-074 and -0, or 102 to the Single Family Residential R1, Two Family Residential R2, General Commercial G-C and General Industrial M-1 Zoning Districts.
Thank you.
Was first by Paula and second by Lans?
Second by Walter.
Was second by Walter, okay. Thank you. Councilmember Paula?
Aye.
Councilmember Walter?
Aye.
Councilmember Bagby?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Lans?
Aye.
Mayor Cruz?
Aye.
Passes five zero. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And I will...
Thank you, everyone. Thanks very much.
Thank you, guys.
And I will call a recess.
Madam Mayor, before you call the recess, you or my fellow council members... Don't mind, I would like to be excused for the rest of the evening.
Sure.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so we're going to go to new business. And that is item G1, because it's, no. Oh, we did. Oh, that's right, F2, that's where the capital improvement is. I thought it was under new business. Okay, so possible adoption of the City of Cloverdale Fiscal Year 2022-2027 Capital Improvement Program. Who would address that?
Madam Mayor, our Assistant City Manager, Community Development Director Kevin Thompson is going to give a brief presentation to council on this item.
Mayor, council members, this is the public hearing for consideration of adoption of the capital improvement plan for fiscal year 2022-27. There's a resolution attached to your packet. If you are comfortable adopting it, that is available. We started this a couple of years ago. You may recall back in February, we had a really long meeting, and we discussed and went through a lot of the projects with our consultant Ann Lynch from GHD. Back in October of this year, or actually, we're still in October, excuse me, October 5th, the Planning Commission did review the CIP as well and make a determination that it's inconsistent with the general plan, which is a state law requirement, and they adopted a resolution. Just real quick, the area is covered: water, wastewater, streets, stormwater, drainage, parks, landscaping, civic facilities, and the airport. Our plan is to bring back the CIP as needed during the budgeting process. If there's any changes or amendments, we'll take a look at it every year when we do our budget and propose any changes if needed at that point. We haven't had a CIP since, what was it, David, 2012? So this is a big lift, and we're really happy to be at this point and get this approved and adopted. So that's pretty much it. Unless you have any specific questions about projects in the CIP, again, we had the long meeting in February, so we are recommending adoption of the resolution, adopting the CIP Capital Improvement Plan Fiscal Year 22 to 27.
I open to council for discussion. Yes, Councilmember Bagby?
On page 62 of the report, I just wanted to put the chief on spot because I can. No, we got a really good update from Darren at the last meeting about kind of some shifting priorities based on really new information. And I just was wondering if you had any updates on the, on the list of projects for the police department, specifically like the radio repeater? I mean, you're, we're still listed at 15,060 and necessary. I'm going to, I'm going to pretend I don't see the police station for now, but I just was wondering if there was anything in your list that you're concerned about, if anything new has come up, or if you, if there have been any changes.
So can you tell me what page that is in again? I'm sorry.
It's page, it's page 62 of the report itself. You don't see mine?
Somehow my report doesn't show complete...
It's on the bottom right-hand corner of the report, the actual report, the CIP.
Forgive me, I'll have to...
It's an attachment to the staff...
I'm just going to pass you my iPad. Here, we chat... There you go, there you go. Here. One, two, no. Not one.
So in regards to the police radio repeater, this is something that's been on the radar for a while. David might be able to help me a little bit on the conversations we've had about the repeater site by the water tower that we were looking to work with companies to try to have it put out there. Currently, it exists in the property where it stands right now, and it's backed up by generation when we have situations that are necessary. Ideally, since I've been here, this is something that's probably needed to get some attention, and hopefully we can start to move forward on this, depending, of course, on where we're at with some of the projects lined up at the water tower. I think a tower is something that was being discussed at the water property, but maybe David has a little bit more on that.
Chief, happy to offer an update, and the specific tank that chief's referring to is the Ritter tank. We co-located next to the Ritter tanker various telecommunications facilities, and we have been in discussions with one of the existing telecommunications companies that would like to do some additional improvements up there about opportunities for co-location of city-maintained reader, radio repeater equipment. We currently have equipment up at the top of Vista View Drive. The site's not ideal because it is on private property, but with an easement to the equipment. Preferably, it would be on public property and in a location that would offer connectivity throughout the city. And so it's, it is a critical project. What we'd like to do, obviously, is, it's identified in 2026, and I think as part of budget discussions, you know, review that timeline and see if it can be advanced and if, you know, council supports as part of the budget process advancing that project so that, you know, to support and improve communication facilities for our police department.
Yeah, I think that in the wake of Darren's presentation, it really underlines some of these urgent infrastructure projects that have really been neglected for far too long, and it has some synergy with being able to possibly put it on existing public property that is, you're co-locating it with some of the water facilities as well. So I just think that it's, I just wanted to make sure that it's still your top priority and that I understood what the underlying issues were around it, so thank you.
Councilmember Paul?
Just to follow up on that. Just to follow up on that, I know the county has repeater towers throughout the county, and I know, have we checked with them to see about putting our repeaters on their towers?
So that's a great question. I personally have not. Some things that come into play here are site alignment for interoperability. Sometimes the mountain passes, sometimes some of the things that interrupt those really create havoc for us. And I think that is one of the bigger reasons why we really need to look at a tower up at the Ritter tank is for that alignment, that site alignment, that gives us a much better opportunity for interoperability. But that is something we certainly can do. This project somewhat started prior to my arrival here in August of 2019, so I have not personally looked into that, but we certainly can.
Well, the reason I raise it is it may not fit our needs, but then it may. And it may be something to look at and see if it does, if that's something we may want to pursue, and it maybe it'd be a less cost. But if it doesn't, certainly we, but I would like to see us explore that, because I do know they have to communicate anywhere in this county, and they have repeater set up throughout the county for that purpose, so.
Actually, I do have some news about that.
Thank you.
And there is going to be some new towers right by River Road, so I will go ahead and send an email to you, Chief, copy to Public Works Director for the County, Johannes Horvitz, to see if that could be explored.
That would be great. I'm assuming these are the towers that Jeff Peters with the CERT team has been very much behind in trying to get this for...
There are some additional ones, too.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, this is required to be a public hearing tonight, so just if you want to open it up, see if there's any comments?
So do we have any hands in the public?
See no hands raised.
Thank you. So bring you back.
So Madam Mayor, I'd like to go ahead and introduce the resolution by title only. City of Cloverdale City Council Resolution, Resolution of the City of Cloverdale City Council Adopting the Fiscal Year 2022-2027 Capital Improvement Program, CIP. That's Councilmember Paula.
Yes. Yeah, before I second on, I just want to make a very brief comment about that, in that that is that if this isn't a living document, it's just another binder on a shelf somewhere. This document, which we've been working on for several years now, is really got to be our go-to first resource and our highest priorities. A lot of hard work went into this by multiple staff members, a lot of consulting dollars is, are invested in this, and this really needs to be our number-one source and our priorities, as well as expanding our tax base so that we can deliver these vital services to our community and for public safety and for the betterment of our community. So with that, I am happy to second the item.
Thank you, Councilmember Bagby and Councilmember Paula. Laurie?
Councilmember Paula?
Aye.
Councilmember Bagby?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Lans?
Aye.
Mayor Cruz?
Aye.
For the record, Councilmember Walter is absent. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to just request that staff, if somebody could print out that document, I'd like to get a copy in my box, please. Thank you.
And I'm sorry, I didn't compare the two versions of it. Just, does the current copy of the SIP incorporate some of the comments that Darren made about some of the shifting priorities based on the most recent drought? Or if not, what will the updating or reprioritization process look like, City Manager Kelly?
Great, great question, Councilmember Bagby, and I think we will need to look at the dates in terms of, or the timeframe for which we suggested project delivery would be for those key projects. You know, council did weigh in more specifically on some of the water CIP, so we will make sure we look at that closely. And, you know, I do want to point out, you know, it's a guiding document so that, you know, if a project, you know, is advanced in time because of council priorities, that's certainly fine, and that's why it's really a living, breathing document. So we'll make those updates and be bringing those forward.
So we'll make those updates and be bringing those forward. Not too far off in the future, we'll be kickstarting the budget process for next fiscal year. And the hope is, now that we've done the kind of heavy lifting, staff's done the heavy lifting to develop this document, we'll be updating it accordingly and keeping it up to date. So there's a real opportunity to make sure that the timeframes for project delivery reflect the council priorities.
Okay, thank you. So now we go to new business. And we have G1, which is considered approving a 12-month commitment to advertise monthly in the Cloverdale Connect news publication. And before we go on and discuss that, could you go over the correspondence about the other requests that we received from Soco News so that the public is aware that why there is an emphasis on working with Cloverdale Connect?
Madam Mayor, if it's okay with you, I'll just give an overview of this item and then kind of end with the discussion on the Cloverdale Connect communication?
Okay.
Is that okay? Okay.
The Soco News.
The Soco News, yeah.
Communication, yes.
Because I think the background on this kind of ties in and covers both this item as well as that communication. You know, this item is brought forward tonight because council, I think, has expressed a desire to really improve our city communications to our community, our residents and our business community, and to be able to really address some of the questions that our community often has about key projects, priorities, and programs that the council is prioritizing and taking up as key actions here at the council meeting. And one of the desires is, with the loss of the Cloverdale Revoli as a local print material, is to seek alternatives to ensure that we really do have a communication vehicle to reach out to our community with timely communications and updates, again, about key priority projects, questions that are being raised by the community. And what we've seen is Cloverdale Connect has really developed a program for reaching not only households in Cloverdale, but the surrounding unincorporated area and even Geyserville. So there's a real opportunity for us as a city to connect with our residents through direct mailing of this news publication. So that's kind of the premise behind this item tonight is to enhance the tools we have to communicate with our residents. And with Dana Johnson's help, she's provided some options for us to provide what we'll call ad layouts within the Cloverdale Connect that could highlight, again, some of those key activities of the city. We're going to detail on that in a moment, but I want to touch on, Mayor, your request to kind of touch on the communication from Soco News. I think similarly, Soco News offers now really what's completely virtual, our electronic media. And I think there is likewise an opportunity to look at that media source for some of our outreach to our community. We do continue to use that source for often our legal publications for public noticing and other legal noticing requirements. But I would see that as kind of a supplement rather than a in lieu of the proposed item that you're considering tonight because, again, I think there is a desire to be able to provide written print material to our households. And I think that's a unique product that's offered by Cloverdale Connect. It's mailed to literally every household in Cloverdale, and it ensures that the media that we would be generating and placing in that ad would literally be delivered to everybody's mailbox. And we see it as an opportunity for us to, again, really connect with the community and add this to our toolbox along with our website, our social medias, outlets, as well as our weekly newsletter via our website. So what we've done is, again, in close consultation with Finance Admin and Police Subcommittee, is develop some proposals for council to consider for advertising in the Cloverdale Connect. What we've provided is kind of what we recommend is two key options, either a half-page ad option or a full-page ad option. Ms. Johnson, the editor for Cloverdale Connect, has proposed giving us a discounted rate for either of those options based on the current rate structure. Included in your packet is an identification of the word, the number of words that would be able to be provided in those ads. And there's also some proposed layout options for council to take a look at, whether you'd like, for example, a horizontal ad layout versus a vertical ad layout, or whether there's a preference there. Also, one of the key issues that was discussed was ensuring that we publish in outreach to our bilingual community. And so the thought process was that if we seek a full-page ad, we could do a half in English and half in Spanish and ensure that we are reaching our entire population. So what we're asking council tonight is to approve a resolution that would support a 12-month commitment to advertise within the Cloverdale Connect. This was not a budgeted item, so we are also requesting council support for a budget amendment to fund that. What we recommend council do is give us your preference again, or support for either the half-page or full-page ad. We're recommending the full-page ad, again, to ensure we're able to reach both our English as well as Spanish readers. And I think joining us tonight is Dana. She's going to offer be able to address any questions you may have about the different ad layouts that are offered by that newspaper. And we, as staff, look forward to continuing to develop this program, assuming council supports tonight. I think there are some options for picking topics and ensuring that we're addressing those key communication items that council thinks and recommends are important. This could be something that's on the Finance Admin and Police Subcommittee as kind of a standing item, so we could get your key input and feedback as to what are the topical areas that you'd like us to address and even come up with a schedule. And it'll be something that your senior staff will work on to identify within their departments, what are some of those key, again, some of the key topics that we want to ensure that we're informing, keeping the community informed. So it's really a function of trying to enhance and support our ability to communicate with our residents. So at this point, we're happy to address any of the details that are included in your packet regarding the ad layout size, the cost, and any input that council would like to share relative to this recommendation that we pursue advertising in the Cloverdale Connect.
Before you start.
Sure.
Before I start? I want to know, what is this little beep that happens every time towards the end of the meeting?
Yeah, that is the security alarm for the building.
Oh, okay.
There's a telecommunications issue that has apparently been worked on by the building owners, and it's a challenging issue. We're working with the telecommunications company on, I think it's a poor connection, and it triggers the alarm.
Thank you. I'm sure that the public was kind of curious, too, at this point.
Or that fire alarm is like the battery just goes out for every meeting? Yeah. Well, Madam Mayor, I just wanted to chide our city manager for bringing an item before the council and asking us to get down and dirty about ad layout, horizontal versus vertical. And I got to say, that's the last thing you want to design by committee. My recommendation, honestly, is that, and Dana, please chime in if you have something to add to it. I really understand the importance of picking a layout and picking the number of words so that you have a target and you don't have to redesign it constantly. But I would warn, I hesitate to say it's going to look like this every time, it's going to be this orientation every single time, because one of the content items that we may want to put in periodically is content that we get directly from BayRan, content we get directly from RRWA, content that we get directly from one of our JPAs or our regional partners. And we may hand it to Dana, and she's like, well, this doesn't work. You know, or her layout person may say, well, this, you know, I actually, this doesn't work. So I don't want to have a necessarily written-in-stone way that we have to lay it on her pages. I completely support having a, this is generally the layout and design, but have it so that there can be adjustments if we get some content from streets to creeks or something like that that we do want to run, and it just doesn't look right in the orientation that we've chosen as our standard. I think we just need to be flexible. That was my comment. I was like, I don't want the design decided by committee because I think we all know what that'll end up looking like. So that's my input.
I appreciate the comment, Councilmember Bagby. I think the idea with providing some sample ad layouts is to just give council perspective. I can defer to Dana on, as the editor, what kind of alternative layout options there are. But it was just, I think, the discussion we had was to provide council with what it might look like. So there may be some variation between ad sizes, for example, between if there's three, maybe some days or some months is a very important topic, and we just do one ad. It just, you know, I think that's where we'll work with the Finance Admin and Police to identify what are those key topics that we'd like to see covered, and we can even bring a schedule back to council if you'd like to see that.
Yeah. You know, I will agree with Councilmember Bagby in terms of having the flexibility because, you know, she's in a JPA, I'm in a JPA. And, for example, Zero Ways and Recollege, they have their own department for printing, and they have great visuals that we could share with our public, and they might not fit within the layout that, let's say, we vote on. I would say that maybe give us some flexibility, which will also impact the amount of money that we spend. I think that at some point, we might have to pay a couple more dollars, and at other times, it might be a little less. But when we do the ad multiplication, it would add up to the same amount that we contract with you for. So I think it's very important. Another thing that I mentioned to David, and I'm sure that you already heard, is the font size. You know, it could be a little bit smaller so that we could get more information in. Also, there will be times when we're going to have like picture grams that don't necessarily have to be translated and so on. So I support doing this, and I thank Mayor, Councilmember Paula, for really supporting this strongly, as well as, you know, I wanted this also because not everybody has access to electronics and so on. So I would like to know if that's something you would contemplate. And perhaps it's, yes, it's time for you to come to the mic.
I'm sitting down here before, but I couldn't speak with you on social media.
No, this is a big thing in front of us.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, councilmembers, for letting me come tonight. So first of all, flexibility is the key to survival. So we can do a full page, we can do a half-page work, I don't care. You know, whatever best suits the city's needs is what I'd like to provide, keeping in mind that I provide all graphic design services at no charge at all. So if everyone can do their part in coordinating, getting material to me by the deadline, then I can work on the layout that works the best for the city. So everything's flexible, absolutely flexible. The only thing that I would caution, you mentioned font size. One of the important feedbacks that I get from readers is they like the size of the font because it's easy to read. There's a number of people who are older, and their site isn't as good as it was. Me, too.
Hello.
And so they appreciate the larger font size. So there's some flexibility there, but I wouldn't go down more than two points in the font size.
No, of course. You're the boss there. But we would like to see if we could get a little bit smaller.
Sure, sure.
I mean, some of the things, some of the things that had to do with legal and ordinances and so on are a little bit lengthy. I mean, I don't think we would necessarily put a whole page on ordinances and so on. Yeah. So, yeah, but that was a concern that I had, too.
And the option is there for graphics, for if there's charts or photos or whatever's needed. I just, I would think it would be great to partner with the city. I have a way to deliver your message to households, post office, buses, and businesses in the greater Cloverdale area. So however you want to use that, I'm here. In exchange for that, I'd love some kind of commitment that, okay, every month we'll do something so that I can save space. But it can be whatever space suits your needs. It could be three months in a row it's a full page, then there's two months where it's a half page. Doesn't matter to me.
Thank you. Thank you for that access to flexibility. Okay.
Just first, thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to thank you for being so open and flexible and working with the city on this. I really think it's going to be a great venture, and certainly I want to thank the council for supporting this because I think the communication really needs to start. And I like the idea of having it as a standing item on the Admin, Police, Finance Subcommittee to talk about things that we feel that we're hearing from our council members in the community that we may want to have addressed, and just to kind of keep our finger on the pulse of the whole thing. So I think it's really going to be a real worthwhile venture.
Wonderful. Thanks. Great. Any other questions for me?
Well, we need to open to the public.
Yeah.
Oh, go ahead.
I have one question for you. Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you for your time, and thank you for being here and doing everything. And I look forward to this. My question to you is, listening to what everyone is saying and knowing how hard it is going to be to do something different every month, is it easier for us to do an insert versus you having to deal with us every month changing whatever we decide to do?
You can certainly do that. That's an option, too.
And that's why I'm asking, because I know that Madam Mayor will have ideas, Councilmember Bagby will have ideas, I'll have ideas, David will have ideas, and it'll just, every month, you're going to be changing it. By the month three, you're going to cancel our contract. I want to cause the least amount of headache to you at the same time, because maybe we want something front and back in Spanish, or full-page English-Spanish. And what's easier for you and better in the long run? And I was thinking insert versus changing it on her every month.
I think we need to be consistent. Some people know what to expect also.
Yeah.
That I think not to change what you've done so far. If there's a need for an insert,
I think that will be available, too. But in order for also for the staff to be able to have consistency in terms of how much work they have to do and consideration for their time, I think we, for now, we should just start little and see how it goes.
So if I may make a comment, because I've been in this business for decades now. Inserts serve their purpose. They're great for ACE hardware. A lot of times, if it's a printed insert that isn't a lot of pictures and buy now, it just gets, take it out and put in the recycle bin.
Throw it away.
So that's just a little word of caution. However, I would keep that as an option that However, I would keep that as an option that some months it might be appropriate. There might be something that you want to insert in the paper with a return envelope where you want feedback. And in that case, I would suggest using the insert, but then also maybe a little quarter page saying, look for our insert. Don't throw this out. We want your feedback. We want to hear from you. And that keeps that relationship going. But I just would be cautious about inserts.
Great. Thank you for, I appreciate that.
Yeah, that'd be a great thing to help the chamber get like their, the holiday schedule out or, you know, something like that or the, the, well, not that we know what any events are going to be in the next year, but under normal circumstances, sometimes you can send out a, an event calendar, a six-month event calendar or something like that. And I was just going to comment too is that it's, I think it underlines the importance if we are going to, you know, move forward with, with this, that we do have a media calendar. And, you know, it may be that the content creation is just too difficult for us to manage in-house. And I know that, you know, we've talked back and forth about having, you know, possibly a service or a consultant handle that for us, but the importance of having a media calendar so that you at least have a skeleton to kind of hang your, your schedule on, I think that that's, that's finally important. But, you know, this, this, this idea comes forward at a really interesting time, just another, and thank you Dana for sticking through, through the meeting. I really appreciate it. You know, just on Tuesday at the Cal Cities League Leaders Event that I attended, one of the speakers was actually an editor from the Los Angeles Times and his closing comments to all of us electeds was the importance to support, of supporting local media. And here we are tonight talking about that. And he said, you know, and he reminded us that it's really the, the bedrock of our democracy is being able to communicate with each other, get our message out and hear from our constituents. And, you know, for that reason, I absolutely support moving forward with this, but I would also encourage the Subcommittee to consider supporting Soco News as well because they, I mean Dana's service has just been so wonderful to, I read it all the time Dana, and actually it was so funny, just recently I think I tore out the ad for one of the services in Cloverdale that my, one of my customers was asking for. I was like, oh, I know where you found that. And I tore out the ad and handed it to her from Cloverdale Connect. So, I mean, I literally use it all the time. But we also have the, there's a journalism aspect as well. And for that reason, I think it's very important that we also support Soco News and their mission because the world is changing and how we consume and get news is changing and it's, it is so important for us to have sources of information that are vetted and edited and reliable. So for, you know, with that, I'd be happy to see this item move forward.
Before we move on, I would like Guadalupe to say something about how do you like to get your news?
Well, as it, I'm sure comes as no surprise, social media is my main resource. I know for the school, for example, I know a lot of adults tend to prefer Facebook, but for the school anyways, I know they have an Instagram where they can post on the stories, upcoming events that are like little reminders. Bigger news will be posts so that way you can reference back to it. And it's just that sort of deal. And it's a good way that people can choose to listen in and tune in. They can choose to follow the page if they care to know the events that's going on, which is always encouraged by the school. But at the same time, if they don't want to, it's not forced upon them, if that makes sense.
And how, how do you see Cloverdale Connect to this day? I mean, I'm sure that it has gotten to your house a few times by now.
Yes, it has. If I'm being quite honest, I don't think I've looked into it enough to give a good opinion. I think it's something I would have to look a bit more into. But I thought the idea of an insert would be interesting, although then when the point was brought up that sometimes it can be disregarded, then I thought more about that and I said, oh, well, if we want to get the news across, then maybe it isn't a good choice.
Thank you. Chief?
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You know, Chief is our Nixle expert, right? He's our Nixle expert. He doesn't have to worry about graphics. All right. Well, I think it's time for us to, yeah, she, you said there were no hands, right? Lori? We can't hear you. Did we take these out to see if there were any hands?
No hands left right now. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Yeah. All right.
So, Madam Mayor, I'd like to introduce the resolution, City of Cloverdale City Council. A resolution of the City Council, City of Cloverdale approving a 12-month commitment to advertise monthly in the Cloverdale Connect, beginning with the December 2021 issue and an amount not to exceed $18,360 and authorize a budget amendment in the general fund, Fund 100-101-42345-000 to cover the unbudgeted expenses.
Second.
Lori, that was moved by Councilmember Pala and seconded by Councilmember Bagby.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Pala?
Aye.
Councilmember Bagby?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Lands?
Aye.
Mayor Cruz?
Aye.
Francis 401, thank you.
You know, I serve in the Legislative Committee for Community Services and this goes hand in hand with what community services is. And it is a challenge for every jurisdiction and it is a constant theme in League of Cities. How do we communicate with our constituents? What's the most effective? There's not any kind of recipe for this and we just have to try in every community, knowing our constituents and knowing their needs. And this, the essence of democracy, which is communication and openness. So thank you very much for moving this forward. At this moment, we are going to go to, what is this? The, the next item, which is recommendation, resolution, let's see.
G2, Code Enforcement.
We are in new business G1, G2. Where is my G2? Somehow it didn't come through. Could you, could you read G2? Yeah.
G2 is Consider Options for Additional Code Enforcement Services.
Yes. So go ahead. Is it Kevin or do?
Madam Mayor, members of council, this item is going to be presented to you by Kevin Thompson.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmembers, we're here to present some ideas for some additional code enforcement help. This item's been talked about at the Police, Finance and Admin Subcommittee for a couple meetings now. Currently, our code enforcement is carried out primarily from the Planning Department with sometimes help from the Building Department and less times, but sometimes with the Police Department's help. We're currently working on nine active cases and that's particularly Rafael who's really working on those. We've laid out a couple options and within those two options are kind of subsets of different options for your consideration. The first option is to create a full-time community services officer or code enforcement officer position that would report to the police, to the police chief. We, we looked into these and we've included some project, excuse me, job descriptions and some salary projections as well. It was discussed at the, at the Police, Finance and Admin Subcommittee that it would be nice if, if we did go down the route of hiring a full-time person, that person would be able to help out with other tasks in addition to code enforcement. And if that's the direction, we would recommend a community services officer versus a community code enforcement officer. And Chief, you can chime in if I'm getting any of that wrong, but the thought there was that that position is a little more flexible, that could do additional tasks when, in addition to code enforcement. We've also received two proposals from two separate consultants, one of which I believe is here tonight, Robert Smith. So the first one is from Fourleaf, which is, it's a big company that does primarily building inspection services and building department services. They're all throughout California and I think the West Coast as well. And they have a code enforcement arm as well. I'm just mentioning both of these proposals are just about $50,000 a year for one day of code enforcement. The other one is Robert Smith and I'm sorry, I apologize, Rob, for saying that you were a retired attorney. I know that you're not retired, so that is, that's on me, so sorry about that. But Rob is currently working, he did work or he is working as an attorney for the City of Sonoma, but he's also doing code enforcement for the City of Gattati, Windsor and of course, Sonoma. And he is here tonight. So that's $50,000 a year for one day a week. And that's my, concludes my report if you have any questions. And I know Rob is here as well, if you have any questions with him. I did reach out to Fourleaf, but I don't think they were, they weren't available.
Thank you. So open the floor for discussion. Yes, Councilmember Pala?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. You know, I, I'm a strong supporter of getting a proactive code enforcement program in place. We have a lot of codes within our municipal code. Many of them are not enforced unless it's complaint-driven, which that really needs to change. I reviewed all the materials and thank you for all the detailed work. And one thing that really stood out, and I know we're going to hear from Robert, but it was Robert being an attorney who, one of the things that was mentioned, reviewing our codes, many of them are outdated and that is a huge undertaking, but one that's really necessary as well as the enforcement arm. And again, when I use enforcement, I'm talking compliance-driven, not necessarily the heavy hammer, though if compliance doesn't occur, then it has to be elevated like any other thing that's down the road. So I was very impressed with that and I think I like the other fact that it's not to exceed $50,000 where the other one had several overtime provisions and the several other expenses that were laid in there. So I just wanted to make that comment that, you know, I really think we need to go ahead and move forward on this this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments, please? Yes, someone?
Yeah, just a couple of questions. I wonder if the city manager could kind of shed some light on where this lies in the city's stated priorities as far as, you know, hiring or budgeting. It's my memory, and we're going way back here, the last time this council did a, did a, a meeting about the, setting council priorities, but it seems, it seems to me that this was, this was fairly high even two years ago, three years ago. So just, and I'm not seeing anything in the, in the staff report about where, where this rests in, in our stated goals and in our, in our assessment of the kinds of hires that we need to make and how we need to prioritize them. Hopefully that made sense, because it's getting late, I realize. It's getting late, yeah.
No, that's a very good question, Councilmember Bagby. And, you know, I, I think the issue of code enforcement is, is an issue that to a certain extent waxes and wanes. And it, it has been for a number of years, you know, since, since I've been here, it's been a priority, but, but, you know, as, as things do, other issues come up that kind of rise in priority. And so we've seen this kind of issue come back. And of course, that's, I think what you're seeing tonight is a reflection of that, that there's a, been a, you know, interest by community members in our approach to, to code enforcement and I think a desire by members of our community to increase our code enforcement activities. And, and so this, this wasn't necessarily a, an issue that was identified by council as part of our, our budget priorities. I think that was in part due to, to COVID and of course, we were in a mode of, of really being, and I think it was wise for council to do so, being conservative budgetarily, being, you know, we were, all departments in the last two budget cycles were really asked to kind of scale back and reduce expenditures. And I think with that was, you know, intended to address, you know, really what are some, were some fiscal concerns around the impact of COVID to our, to our general fund and to our expenses. You know, now we, we are now, you know, kind of moving hopefully successfully, you know, away from a full closure and a reopening and again, seeking, seeing that re-interest in, in code enforcement and, you know, staff has been dedicating more time to this. One thing that has come evident to us is that, I think that Councilmember Pala has hit on, and we've heard from our consultants and I think even conversations with our city attorney, that it's also a time for us to look at our, our municipal code and the tools that it provides. I think the processes that are set forth in our municipal code are somewhat outdated and are also inefficient in terms of achieving the objectives that we're seeking from our community. And so I, I think tied to this is a real desire, at least from staff, to kind of fundamentally update our municipal code to give us more to, to, maybe, maybe more's not the right word, but to really drive the outcomes that we seek. And, and I think what you find in our municipal code now kind of is a little, results, it's a little bit of a hamster wheel approach to code enforcement. We, we get a little bit of success, but we, we, you know, we ultimately address it, but it requires a lot of time and energy. And I think that really if we, if we can revamp our code, it will, it will give, it will provide the opportunity for us to be more successful in our efforts and more efficient. And I think, you know, from staff's perspective, we kind of like the, the proposals for, you know, consult, you know, based on option two, the consultants, because I feel like there's more flexibility built into that and, you know, we can, it's a little more scalable. But that, again, that's just staff's perspective. It's ultimately a council discussion on, you know, where your priorities are. So I hope I answered your question, Councilmember Bagby.
You did, you did. And it was very helpful. And, and I think that you, you underscored, you know, one of the, one of the things that I would be resident, reticent to do this evening would be to consider another FTE, especially considering our pension obligations and the state of our budget right now. But when you're talking about the need to also maybe have that additional consulting service, I think some of our municipal code probably still dates back to the eighties, probably could, probably could use.
Or before.
Or, or earlier, I was being generous. Some of it's still in the IBM Selectrix font. I can, going in the direction of having, having a consultant who could then also offer the additional perspective of being able to work on that municipal code, bringing it up to contemporary standards is something that is attractive to me. And I, I think that it's within our, you know, it's within our means as well. So that I could move forward with. I would, but as far as, you know, adding headcount and FTEs, I think that I'm not prepared to do that. If down the road it proves that that actually would be more beneficial, I just need to see the numbers and see the, the evidence of that. And I need to, you know, I need to hear, you know, clear policy direction, not just a scattershot, you know, let's solve the problem by hiring somebody approach. So, but I would be willing to support, you know, a consultant this time and see how it goes.
Okay. Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is one of the items. Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is one of the items that I have not made a decision on. It's not often that I do that. I usually have a lot of background and knowledge and try to have a good idea of what I want to do before I even step up here. So I have a lot of questions, and they're for, against both sides, and I'm probably gonna be random asking. We recently did a contract with animal control, and one of the big things that, on the dais, we said, we don't want them going out harassing 80-year-old men with 15-year-old dogs. That's not the point of this hire, this contract. And within the first three days, I get contacted by an 80-year-old man with a 13-year-old dog, that he was out threatening to ticket. I don't want something like that. That's not what our small-town community wants and needs. So I, when I look at things like the code enforcement officer, I want to know, what is he going to be going out and looking for? Is he going to be coming in, giving me tickets for a basketball hoop on a sidewalk, or a bush that's too big? Or, you know, what is the point of it? Is it a building code when we have coastline already? Things like that. So ultimately, what is our goal here? And that's what I'm trying to establish.
Madam Mayor, if I may, the goal is, we have laws, is to comply with them. It's pretty simple. And to do it hopefully voluntarily, and to give people adequate time to understand what the law is. The other option is to repeal the law and not have it. So I think I respect what you said. We shouldn't be going out there with a hammer. We should be explaining to people why they can't do things and how it impacts their other fellow neighbors in the neighborhood. We had several really blighted neighborhoods, residents within specific neighborhoods. We end up sitting down in a house, Councilmember Bagby and myself, with five different families in the neighborhood that were blighted with rats infested in debris. The people had debris all over the front of the house, and they're just adamant it's impacted their values of their homes, it's impacted their health and safety of their children. And they said, and then they had a copy of our own code and pointed out all the violations, and they were correct. And why are we not enforcing them? And that was a very legitimate question. That's kind of what we're here for as a government. We put rules in place to protect people. And we can change the rules, and if we don't want those to be rules, then we should change them. But not have them, but just ignore them. And I think that's the message I got. And I get that from several places throughout the city, you know, and we're working on another one. And I'll just bring it up, the car wash. It's been a real blighted area, and it's been cleaned up. But we need to have the tools and the ability to go out and deal with those. So I agree with you. It shouldn't be a hammer. It should be trying to get compliance. If this is a bad law, we should change it. But, you know, if we want basketball hoops out in the street, then we don't put a law that prevents it. If we put a law in, then we should respect it. So that's how I see it. Thank you.
Yeah, and I would like to chime in. You know, I agree with Councilmember Paula in that regard. You know, we, we take a lot of pride in, in what Cloverdale is. And unfortunately, some of our very long-term residents have blight and, and have conditions in front of their houses that bring about rats and, you know, awful landscaping and, or lack of, you know, building, you know, habitat for mosquitoes, for roaches, for mice. I mean, even some of our businesses are not complying with environmental protection standards that it's not even local, but also county and statewide. So we just want to keep the character, as we always say, of Cloverdale. But at the same time, we want to make sure that people understand what is their responsibility and what is their obligation. But one of the things is that some of our ordinances are so old that don't make any sense anymore with all the changes that have come about. So we need a person, like one of the proposals, that could help update what ordinances are, and at the same time, help us see what would make sense and what wouldn't. And perhaps even help establish an education process. And, and I think that using Cloverdale Connect is one of those ways to say, hey, this is an updated ordinance, and this is one of the things that we expect as council to see in our community. How can you contribute to making Cloverdale what we always say it is? So that's, that's, you know, I'm very inclined, just like Melanie and Councilmember Paula, to go for, for a trial with a consultant that would not add additional expenses to the city in terms of, you know, retirement, benefits, this, that, the other. And it's a person with experience. Actually, I, I was, I learned a little bit about this in Cotati when I went to visit the mayor there. And I thought, wow, that sounds like a great idea for Cloverdale, too. So that's, that's my inclination.
And that's why I'm bringing this up, is because I want to know more as to why we are spending, wanting to spend this money when we are a low-income town with a small budget. And that's why I asked this question. So the other, the other day, we did an abatement on a house. How would this have helped you, chief, if you don't mind? Could you maybe give me a little bit of insight on that?
Yeah, I'd be happy to, Vice Mayor. I was present there from start to finish. And when I hear things like voluntary compliance, education, I agree 100%. The city did every part of that and took the appropriate measures to try to gain that. Where this now comes into play is, when we don't have that, now we start moving to the enforcement area. And the benefit of having a contractor like this is, they know the system. From the law standpoint, how to put the boots on the ground now and get it done. That would have been hugely beneficial, from what I observed yesterday, once we were dealing with the enforcement aspect. And you will run into these, just like in your example of the animal control contract. What we don't know, maybe you can shed some light on it, is this the first time this individual's been contacted? Had he been educated? Had there been voluntary compliance requests? And if, if we got to a third time and we haven't, then there may be an enforcement aspect, right? So I look at the same scenario. Would have been beneficial to have those individuals there with that training, that experience, and the ability to address it now and get it done. There were some complications that I could see in there that even I wasn't sure of, and I think we want to steer clear of that. That's why this makes a lot of sense.
Thank you. And I just wanted to make sure it's not a nitpicking position, is what, how I would put it. That's not what I want to envision for our town, and I don't think that our, our community would like that. And that's why I bring up the animal control portion, is I understand that it fit the letter of the law versus the spirit. And that's what, I want to make sure that we stay within that realm, that we're not out here to, you know, get every single person in trouble for every single little thing. That's not what we're looking for. But it's to actually help the community with the larger issues and the municipal code itself. So, thank you.
So, just, thank you. Real quick, I just want to encourage you, any council member, when somebody does approach you with these types of complaints, I've had a few over the last couple of months regarding the police, and I, I brought the chief into the conversation with the individual, and there was a whole lot of good dialogue, and things that the person didn't know, and things, but it really helped. And I would really encourage, that's a good example, where the chief should have been contacted, brought the animal control, and had a conversation. Because the intent is not to issue citations the first time. If that happened, I think it could be corrected. And certainly, I would encourage to make that known. I wouldn't just accept that, because the chief points out, in our case, they did know. And there was, you know, told me they didn't. It all came down after he looked into it, they did know. So it was one of those things. So, thank you.
The same thing happened, you know, somebody made a complaint about a police dispatcher to me, and I said, well, who, when, what time? Do you have a name? I said, I doubt that a dispatcher was, would use that language with you. If you could give me facts, I'll forward it. Until then, it's not an item for me. Yes?
And this is, this is really, you know, more of a process question about what you're, you're asking, you know, for, for our input tonight. I think my, my preference is, is clear. I mean, I prefer to go to hire the contract service. I know that we have one of the contractors here. But I think this comes back to, you know, delegation. I would feel more comfortable setting a policy direction this evening. And if council members have a preference after having, you know, read the reports that were, the proposals that were submitted, I think that that's fine. But I honestly would prefer to leave the final decision up to senior staff, because you're the ones who are going to be working with the firms or with the individuals, I mean, directly. And I see this more of, I wouldn't put my nose into a hiring at this level. So I don't really feel comfortable putting my nose into choosing a consultant at this level. I might have my, my personal preference. I'm, I'm happy to give it to you. But I, ultimately, I think it should be in the hands of, of senior staff as to who we contract with. So that's, that's my preference.
Since Mr. Smith has been here for a while, should we have him address us? And I'm very sorry, I, I didn't realize that he was our last item. So, David or Kevin, who contacted?
You want, Rob? Rob, can you hear us, or?
I can. You've been deprived of my rugged good looks because of my video, but I can certainly hear you.
Okay, well, we have heard the comments of our police chief, council. Could you please address those concerns that we have?
I'd be glad to.
And tell us a little bit more of your services, please.
Sure. The city of Sonoma is where I got my start. The city of Sonoma had its own prosecutor for all misdemeanors. I was that prosecutor and remained it for 33 years. And then they decided they could achieve an easier quality of life compliance with code enforcement. So I took over that. There are some very effective and efficient administrative enforcement tools out there that I brought to the city. And my approach with code enforcement is the number one goal is compliance. And the last thing you want to do is cite somebody or bring them. What you want to do is work with people, and as long as they're working with me, I'm going to support them. So, for example, there's, in Cotati, one of the cities I do it for, there's a, a man who lives in a virtual garbage dump. I mean, he bags of rats, he's got everything. So he obviously has to clean it up. But he's a vet, he has cognitive impairment. They just removed one of his feet because of diabetes. He's not irresponsible, he just can't be responsible. So I've organized the Rotary Club, I got the city to pony up for a dumpster, and we're gonna clean his property up. He's still subject to the process, but we're gonna, we're gonna help him resolve that. Now, on the other hand, when you have a slumlord who's renting substandard RVs in the back, and when a single woman with very minimal means doesn't pay on time, he stops draining her blackwater until it backs up through the shower in the RV. I don't really have a lot of compassion for that guy, so he's probably gonna go through the process. But generally, the, the rule I see, especially for Cloverdale, Cloverdale's right there with Windsor, it's right there with Cotati and Sonoma. They all have that same kind of feel, they have that small-town feel. You don't want to come in and write tickets. Honestly, I haven't, I've written two tickets in the last two years, and they were both for public health orders, and they had to do with, with a recalcitrant commercial operation that just wouldn't comply, whatever they want. But otherwise, I don't write them. People are, for the most part, very willing to come into compliance if you just help them understand how they can do it. Occasionally, you need a tool to kind of bring the brunt reality of what will happen if they don't. But that's a last-ditch measure. But it's necessary in some cases. Code enforcement, honestly, looking, I've read your code, and if I, if you're not, if you're not open to changing it, I think you're wasting your money hiring a code enforcement person. The code is, your code is so cumbersome, it's so focused on nuisance only, and, yeah, I get all that. But the drawback to actually trying to do it is a struggle. I can tell you, Myers-Navy is a great law firm. And when I came to Cotati, I brought my, my structure, my codes, I worked with Myers-Navy, we changed it for Cotati. It's very successful. I think if you check in with the community development director there, you'll, you'll find they're quite pleased with what we're doing. Windsor, again, Myers-Navy, these things were written a long time ago by people who never had to enforce them. So it's not that they're bad, they're just, they're not practical. So we're working with changing Windsors. And the thing I would recommend to Cloverdale is to give somebody, whether it's me or who else, you need to give somebody the tools to, to, to bring compliance for those who just have a stack of letters from the city, from every building department official that's been dealing with their case for the last six years, and they're not going to do anything. Or they're substandard housing, and they don't care. Those are the people that you really need enforcement for. But honestly, I don't think you need a full-time code enforcement officer. I think you need somebody to address the, that, that core group of scofflaws who, who just need a little something extra to bring their property into compliance. And it's, you know, it's fair for the neighbors, it's fair for the community. If you have standards, you don't, I don't go out and look for violations. I only, if somebody complains, then I respond to that. If they don't complain, I'm assuming whatever they're doing in their neighborhood is working for them, and leave them alone. So, but if it's not, then I usually step in with a phone call, preliminary letter, preliminary notice and such. So it's, it's really a protracted issue of education, communication, and a plea for compliance.
Any comments, questions from?
I, like I say, if I can, Madam Mayor, I, I think I'd like to see us move forward with this this evening. And certainly, I'm fine letting staff make the recommendation or the final decision. But I certainly would support and recommend, and I'm going to share my feelings, with Robert Smith's proposal. I think he's, he does Windsor, he does Cotati, does Sonoma. I think he knows exactly what he needs to be done, and we need that guidance and that leadership to make this happen. So I totally support this, and I would suggest that we maybe put it on the agenda in six months again, just to get an update and how it's working, get some feedback from staff, because we need to kind of just keep our, our thumb on the pulse of that. But I, I would support that. Thank you.
What I like is the fact that he's mentioned Myers-Navy as a, as a collaborative partner. So that's, well, we need to open to the public for any comments.
And, and the question was whether we needed a motion. I think at this point, yes, Mayor, open up the public. But all, all we're looking for is direction, and we would have to have, if, for example, the direction was to go with somebody like Mr. Smith, it would be coming back with a, with an actual agreement. I think at this point, correct me if I'm wrong, City Manager, we're just looking for direction to get, get whatever documents you need at your council.
Okay, so Lori, do we have any hands?
I have no hands raised.
Thank you. So at this point, you have enough direction from us, right?
Thank you, Mayor, members of council, for your input. We have, staff has clear direction and will very likely endeavor to bring this back as quickly as possible, first meeting in November.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I just have a follow-up question for Robert. How long, what kind of timeline to update the codes do you see or vision?
Free consulting. Robert, are you still there?
I am. Oh, what kind of timeline? Well, I would suggest that I'm working with, I believe, the same attorney from Myers-Nave that, that the city of Cloverdale is. And I've, I've got, he has promised me the modifications by Friday. Without giving away the ability to cut and paste, I'm thinking it shouldn't be a law, it shouldn't be that difficult once you give the go-ahead to get the ordinances in front of council in a, in a first-reading format, ultimately soon. But I'm speaking for their schedule, not mine.
Great. Thank you.
Go ahead.
Maybe I could add, add some details to that. As Mr. Smith mentioned, we are working on different code updates, that he's been, been very much involved. A lot of those same tools that, that Robert has said that he's implemented in other jurisdictions have been very successful. And it would be, you know, you don't want to recreate a wheel. You don't want to just, you know, things that work are what he's trying to implement here. So it would go pretty quick. I think that Robert has looked at the code already and has some ideas. So it would, it would move pretty quick. It would be the first step, however, would be to get Mr. Smith under an agreement, and that's what we'll be working on and bringing back at the next meeting.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much, and thank you for your patience, Robert, and good night.
Well, thank you very much. I appreciate your time. And you know what, I'm going to be honest with you. I really like Cloverdale, so this is actually kind of exciting to me. I, I used to think of it as the gateway to Hendy Woods, but I have a nice little town.
Thank you very much. We want to keep it that way. All right.
Thank you.
So we'll move to item G3, award the purchase of a new video broadcast system to Crossfire Northwest Audiovisual. Do we need to discuss this? Let's just say, let's just go to a vote. Okay, please, go ahead.
Okay, I'll be brief. Metamayor Council, this item is to seeking your authorization to purchase AV equipment for both here at CPAC as well as City Hall. So we can kind of address some of the codes, some cords and wires that we have set up here. I think it presents an opportunity to, for equipment that can be utilized by the Performing Arts Center for, for some of their services as well, and provide, you know, benefits to streaming their, their performances. But, but really, it's, it's intended to upgrade the equipment that we, we currently have, so we can offer better digital services to, to our residents. And we, we do know that our existing AV technician is retiring at the end of the year. So this, this new equipment would, would support the, or supplant the existing equipment that we're currently utilizing to transmit our council meetings and planning commission meetings to, to our residents. So our, our recommendation is that council support the purchase and adopt the resolution tonight. We did propose utilizing the PEG Fund or Public Education Grant Fund to fund the equipment. It would be up to council if you wanted to subsequently reimburse that with ARPA money. But otherwise, PEG money is intended to purchase equipment for this purpose. And what we're asking again tonight is to authorize the purchase and including, you know, using PEG funds for, for this new AV equipment, both here at CPAC and City Hall.
So Metamayor, I'm familiar with this company. They've done all the stuff on all the projects that I've been doing over the past 10 years. He's a Cloverdale, was a Cloverdale resident. His family was from Cloverdale. They're the best. They've always been the best. So with that, I'd make a motion to approve the resolution by title only. Resolution of the City Council of the City of Cloverdale, awarding a proposal for the purchase of new dedicated video broadcast systems for the Performing Arts Center and City Hall to Crossfire Northwest Audiovisual in an amount not to exceed $23,717.44, not to be exact. Authorizing the city manager to execute a purchase order with Crossfire Northwest AV and approves a budget amendment in the Fund 213, Public Education and Grant PEG Funds.
I'll second that.
Vice Mayor and Councilmember Paula.
So just, just for formality, I don't think we opened up to the public?
Well, that's right. We're so desperate to make sure that the public does get an opportunity to really see and hear. Okay. Any hands in the public, Lori?
I see them. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm sure they gave up on us. All right, go ahead. Lori, do we have a vote?
Ready for vote? Okay. Councilmember Lanz?
Aye.
Councilmember Paula?
Aye.
Councilmember Bagby?
Aye.
Mayor Cruz?
Aye.
That was 401. Thank you.
All right. And in sake of time, just make sure we do this quick report. Finance Administration, we're meeting on Monday. Planning and Sustainability, we're meeting tomorrow. No? Oh.
Last week.
Look at this. Okay. Public Works, Councilmember Paula, since Councilmember Walter's not here?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Our next meeting is November 16th at 2:00 PM.
Why does it say special meeting?
Because we canceled the meeting the week after, which was Thanksgiving week, and moved it a week earlier. So the regular meeting was canceled, special meeting was set for a week earlier.
Okay. And we have no meeting with Joint City Fire and Vice Mayor Lanz, City School?
Their Jefferson School Building will be opening up Christmas break. Teachers will be moving in. Washington School Gym should be completed in December. They're waiting for windows. We have a meeting on November 15th to discuss juvenile diversion programs and facility collaboration between the city and the, and the school district. Homeless Committee is November 9th is the next meeting. We've been discussing a lot, and that would take a lot of time right now, but there's nothing really that's absolutely new compared to last time, other than some things we'll be discussing, and we'll be coming out around that time of the meeting.
Okay. Thank you. Councilmember Reports? Verbal reports only?
I submitted mine in writing.
We, we had a very busy weekend, and I had quite a tour of pipelines in Cloverdale from Eric Jensen in the last two days, given the, the rains that we had. That was the most exciting, I would say, of all the things that I've been doing. And my written report is almost finished, Lori, so I'll be sending it, so you could add it to tonight. And I know Councilmember Bagby submitted her written report too.
Yep.
Yes. Okay. Informational reports? Okay. Legislative reports?
No legislative reports, Mayor.
No letter of support of opposition this time around? City manager, city attorney reports?
Just, just a brief update for council and the community. Just wanted to acknowledge the, the work of our Public Works team, as well as our police department on our storm response over the weekend. We, we had a very significant and, I think, historic rain event on Sunday in terms of the amount of precipitation we received for, for October. And I, I think our, our staff really is, is, you know, I want to acknowledge that they're, they were proactive in addressing the infrastructure and preparing it for the storm event in advance. And I think overall, when we experience a storm event like that, you know, it has the potential to really inundate our infrastructure and impact it, because, you know, not, not all of our infrastructure is designed for a storm event of that magnitude. But because in part of the proactive maintenance, I, I think our, our systems actually functioned pretty well. Both Kevin and I were out on Sunday driving around and really taking a look firsthand what was, what was happening. Of course, you know, there was some, some localized flooding. Much of that had to, was, I think, on, on private property. But otherwise, I think in terms of the city systems, we, we, for all intents and purposes, fared very well. Of course, we did lose a tree at City Park, unfortunately. And there were, you know, again, some localized flooding at Curbs, and some, especially areas where we have older drainage systems. But I, I think we, we did quite well, and I just want to acknowledge that our Public Works staff, who was all hands on deck, and, and they, I think they did a great job. So I just want to share with them and be thankful for their efforts to get up there and really make sure we were, we were prepared for that event. So I, I'm really proud of the team and being able to work together to get, to get our, get our city prepared. End of report, Mayor.
And, and we learn what are the things to continue to improve. So thank you very much, Chief, all, all the guys, and Cal Fire. I, I was able to see them yesterday when I was going to Shady Lane, and they were very pleased with the response of the city also. Okay, anything on water? We're back to drought times. People need to remember, just because we had rain didn't mean that Mendocino Lake filled up.
That's right, Mayor. I think Lake Mendocino has only increased, you know, we got down to a near historic low of about 12,000 cubic feet, or acre-feet, excuse me, in Lake Mendocino. In last reports, we were just, just above 16. So, you know, it was really fantastic to get the moisture and precipitation we did, but it certainly only made a very small dent in the capacity of our reservoir that, you know, serves the Upper Russian River. So, you know, it's very likely we will, we'll continue to experience drought conditions and, you know, hope that we continue to get some additional precipitation. Right now, in terms of the rain season, we're, we're looking really great with the amount of moisture that we receive. But I think we really do need some additional storms, additional rain to really bolster our reservoir levels. So, you know, message for our community is, you know, continue to do your part. We thank you for the tremendous work you've done in conserving water. This is a great time. Turn off your irrigation systems. I think if you haven't already, please, please do so. And, you know, hopefully, we, we will get additional rain, and, you know, with your conservation efforts, we're, we're going to weather this again quite well. So more to come on this as, as we move further into the, into the, into the, you know, the new season.
Anything on COVID?
Nothing new to report, Mayor. There is some, you know, changing in the masking guidelines for businesses that have all, are 100% vaccinated employees, where kind of reduction in the masking standards. And, and now there's been some new guidance on some of the boosters, and there's allow for mixing and matching, so there's a lot more opportunities for folks who, who haven't already to get vaccinated, and those who may have already got vaccinated to get, get, get boosters and ensure they're protected appropriately from, from COVID.
Any future agenda items? Yes?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like to have an item added to the Police Admin Finance Subcommittee. Discuss and review the vacant properties in the downtown core. So if we can put that on the agenda.
That would be for this one or the following one?
Which are, it could be the following one. Yeah, the following one.
Melanie?
Yeah, just to follow up on that. If that's the case, I'd also like to see us agendize the report from Placeworks regarding their solutions that they suggested for moving forward with the vacancies, because we can, you know, talk to landlords, talk to owners as much as we want to. Hopefully, you know, we'll have a code enforcement officer to help us. But there are some real structural changes that we can make to require, like, for instance, the parking requirements in downtown that will, that we know will actually help spur some development and solve some of those problems. So I'd like to see that process go, go hand in hand. And then I had a separate item for future agenda, and it may actually be appropriate to send it to Finance and Police and Admin. I'd be interested in hearing from the council what their preference would be. I was invited to a meeting at the Senior Center, and I believe that the mayor was, who is actually the liaison to the Senior Center, if I'm not mistaken, was also invited. I believe you couldn't make the meeting time that was coordinated with some of the, the other local partners. And their main concern was the gap in transportation for our seniors. Some folks on the call who were able to give some very good technical information to, to the Senior Center staff and to me, were the representatives from, a representative from the area Agency on Aging, which I learned is the other AAA. And then two staffers from Circuit Riders, who actually is an organization that has a history here in Cloverdale, and they just haven't been, been active. And they had some solutions as well for providing, and they have some specific needs around getting seniors to healthcare in Santa Rosa, getting them a Sutter, getting them a Kaiser. And they were expressing an interest in the city possibly allocating some of the Measure M funds or perhaps other transportation funds to supporting a services for seniors who don't have cars. You know, the, the 60 bus is just not workable, and especially for someone who's, you know, physically challenged or they're, they're aging. It's, actually, Susie did a great job of laying out what it would take to get to an appointment, like you might have at 12:30 at Kaiser or something like that, when you had to catch the bus in Cloverdale, the connections that you had to make, and then the walk that was, that was included. And it was actually a really good piece of staff reporting. I was pretty impressed. And so I passed that along to city staff, who was not able to necessarily make a meeting. And what I would suggest is, at this point, you know, to either go to a subcommittee level or have staff reach out to the Senior Center and come up with some ideas and bring them back to the City Council as well, for either Measure M funding or, or other funding that could help the Senior Center support a program like that, or help us contract with a service like Circuit Riders or something like that. But there were, they had, they had programs that existed that could be cookie cutter, you know, and applied to Cloverdale. They had existing services that they could either administer, or the Senior Center could administer. Senior Center doesn't have the funding or the bandwidth for anything to, to take it on, or to take it on as it is. So I, I mean, I, that's, so that's kind of what the, that's what the meeting was about. And at this point, I think I, my preference would be to direct staff to consult with them and then come back with some funding ideas to the, to the council.
And I'll be quick, but one of the things that I was doing that was in relationship with the same initiative that Councilmember Bagby is talking about, was what can the county do to improve transportation for the North County? And I definitely advocated for the same group, you know, seniors, and I let Melanie know about that. And all the recommendations that were made during that meeting, it was a town hall with Supervisor Gore and, and the staff was taken into account, and the report that was going to be brought to the board supervisors. So.
And they contacted me in my capacity. I think you recommended it possibly.
Yes.
As, as the SCTA representative from Cloverdale. And I think that there are some opportunities to, to get some staff and some, some ideas from SCTA. But I, at this point, I think it would be a great idea for the policymakers to back off and actually have staff, you know, do the, do some of the, do some of the legwork and just find out what resources might be available, either, you know, through the city and Measure M funding, or, you know, if it's something that, that I can help work, work on at SCTA, I'm perfectly willing to do that. But. But, yeah, I think it's time. They know what they want to do. They have some solutions. And I think we just kind of need to have some of the, do some of the technical legwork and come back with some recommendations.